We have this evening to go into closed session to discuss matters related to collective bargaining. So we're now at the point in our agenda where we are at council comments. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Clay?
I have some comments. First, I want to tell the city manager that the communications manager has been diligently trying to contact me since December. And I've put one or other off, and it's entirely my fault. If she has to report to you that she hasn't made contact with all of the council members, it's because I'm a schmuck. Okay.
And mark that in the minutes.
I said I was a schmuck. Well, I'm a schmuck in regarding to getting back to a couple of staff members who are trying to connect with me. My apologies. The other comment I wanted to make is about traffic calming. Four years ago, when I came on to the city council, I -- well, first, I came to council meetings and watched before I ran for office. And one of the first interesting things I saw was a request for a speed bump on Hickory Avenue. And one of the things that I noted was that the reason why the people on Hickory Avenue said that they wanted a speed bump was because everybody -- every other street in the neighborhood had a speed bump, and the end result of everybody else having a speed bump was that then they became the throughway, so then, of course, they had to have a speed bump, which in the end meant that everybody had a speed bump and then re-equalized everything, except everyone had to suffer the misery of having a speed bump on their street. So the point is that it seemed to me like it was a good idea that the city should invest in some more comprehensive traffic calming activities rather than just a street-by-street approach. And other folks thought that was a good idea, and hence ensued the first traffic calming process where we picked out the top three neighborhoods that were interested in traffic calming. I think three different groups in Ward Two applied, and one of them was selected and I think was actually ranked at the top of the list. And this was a group of people from Long Branch Sligo who had been working on traffic calming issues since, as I understand it, prior to I was elected there. Prior to the time I was elected, there was a committee that had identified three hotspot areas, and they were the area along Central Avenue closest to Jackson where there was speeding, the area down by the hiker-biker trail where the Sligo Creek path crosses over Flower where people were blowing through the stop sign and not stopping for people who were coming across the crosswalk there for the hiker-biker trail. And the third area in Long Branch Sligo was the middle section in particular of Flower Avenue where the street is too narrow for two cars to pass by and resulting in aberrant behavior, lots of side-swiping of vehicles, loss of mirrors for many people's vehicles along the side of that street, and people actually getting out of their cars, coming head-to-head, refusing to give way, and getting out their baseball bats to have a conversation about it. So it seemed like it was a right place for traffic calming and got selected as one of the places that -- one of the three places where the consultant did the evaluations, and we moved forward with the traffic calming process. We did five neighborhood meetings that I remember that had anywhere from 40 to 60 people who attended them. I think three of them were done in the homes of neighbors, including Eileen Sobek and I think a couple other folks, and then a couple of them at Columbia Union College. And the end result of all of this, which included notices to all of the neighbors in the community, which included drawings of the different recommended solutions, the end result of this was at the last meeting where we had noticed and advertised that we were going to pick the final test patterns essentially that we're going to test. And the neighbors that came to that meeting selected actually four patterns that they were going to test. The public works people and actually it was the planning department felt that two of the plans were essentially similar, so they reduced that to three. I actually didn't make those proposals. They were put forth by the traffic consultant. One of them came from the traffic consultant, and the other two came from our planning department. And interestingly enough, a majority for every one that was proposed, a majority of people wanted to test it, and then the testing ensued. Testing didn't go very well. The purpose of the test was to figure out whether it was feasible to do any of them and what the side effects were. And the end result of the test, what we learned from the test is that it's impossible to reroute traffic in the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood once people enter the neighborhood. There was no series of mazes that you could put people through that would discourage them from coming into the neighborhood once they were there and made them go faster. And essentially, because of the bottleneck nature of Long Branch Sligo, the end result is that they just move over one street, one street. Unlike where you have like a crisscross where people kind of spread out, they just move over and they all funnel right back into that same point around Sligo. So since then, there was a lot of acrimony in the neighborhood after that, and people said some nasty things to each other, which I thought were entirely uncalled for. People said nasty things to me, but I guess that's why I'm an elected official, so they don't say nasty things to me.
That's what you get paid the big bucks for.
That's right. And things got quiet for a while. In part, they got quiet because this really, it's a neighborhood-driven process. It's not my process. It's not my proposal. It's the Long Branch Neighborhood Group that submitted the original request to the city. Those folks did a lot of the legwork for the meetings. And the end result this year has been that I have put forth to the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Association at their last annual meeting what I thought were the consensus results of the traffic calming process, which is that the things that people thought they could support, as I have mentioned before, to the city council or to the city manager, was the raised intersection at Jackson in Central, possibly at Davis in Central, but that's kind of, I think people would have to talk about that more. And that raised crosswalk down at the hiker-biker trail, really where the -- and a raised intersection at Jackson and Flower Avenue. Nobody was interested in the circles and other things. And right now, it's essentially, it's in the hands of the neighbors if they want to act on it. I don't have a proposal. I'm not pushing it. The Neighborhood Association has to take that information and decide if they do want to come forward. I think a couple of the people who were the movers and shakers of the initial process have moved on. However, there remains people who live on -- so the end result of this is that it was easy to -- it was relatively easy, I think, to resolve the speed issues and the issues down at the creek, but there wasn't any consensus on how to solve the Flower Avenue problems because essentially all the solutions that come up for Flower Avenue move the traffic or some portion of it to another street, and it's a trade-off there. So this week, I got a couple of calls about people who think that there's some kind of secret traffic calming meetings going on around Flower Avenue, and I just want to say that that's not the case. There's no secret traffic calming going on that I know of. I suppose it could be going on, and they haven't invited me to the party, but there's none that I know of that's going on. I do know that there are folks on Flower Avenue who continue to talk about how they can resolve the unique problem that they have in the middle of Flower Avenue. It's a driver behavior problem that's different than speeding or other things. It's kind of a tractable problem in a lot of ways. And I know that they're continuing to work on that. They have some ideas that would look at how you could actually deflect people before they enter the neighborhood, because what we learned was that once they enter the neighborhood, you know, there's no reasonable way essentially to move people through the neighborhood. And people have suggested that I should become a spokesperson for the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Group overall or the Flower Avenue Group. And I just want to say again that I'm not going to become a spokesperson for neighborhood groups. If someone wants to call me and talk to me about what I know about what's going on, I'm always happy to talk to people. My phone number is listed. It's printed on the city website. I frequently sign my name to emails with that. I'm not hard to get ahold of, and people are certainly welcome to call me, but I reiterate that I -- it's not my job as a councilperson to become a spokesperson for these smaller groups that meet. I couldn't accurately become. I'm not that -- I'm not those people. I don't live on Flower Avenue. I don't actually live in the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood, and I'm not going to become the spokesperson for those groups. So for people who want to know what's happening, I suggest that you call your neighbors. They're your neighbors. They're willing to talk to you. I think instead, what we need is people to, you know, to reach out to their neighbors and find out what's happening and see if they can actually help come to some sort of a resolution, because I'm sure the people who live on Flower Avenue are tired of having all this go on in front of their household and continuing to have, you know, damage to their cars and losing their mirrors and all of the honking and strangeness that goes on in front of their house. So that's my council comment for tonight. I'm sorry I went on so long, but there are apparently a number of people who are interested in it and hoping that I would say something on the record, and so that's my comment for the record.
And if I can just add very briefly to that, that the effort to make sure that traffic calming is addressed in a wider spectrum, that rather than just street-by-street and ending up pushing it from one street to another street, has been -- those efforts have been ongoing for, I'd say, at least 10 years in trying to make sure that what you were describing at one point there doesn't happen any more than it already has. And that's why the council made it so that there was review of any particular traffic calming proposal through a neighborhood association if one existed before it came to the council, just to try and address those issues.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, part of that, though, is that we have to figure out how -- we can't continue to hold one street in a neighborhood hostage to suffer all of the consequences of the cut-through traffic because essentially of what is a poor design. I mean, the fact is that the Flower Avenue street is the narrow -- within the narrower streets in the city. It's certainly the narrowest street in Long Branch Sligo, but because of the way things are configured, it, you know, runs all the traffic through there. And so I think that what we need is more responsible citizenry and people actually engaging the issue from my perspective instead of everyone there, you know, pushing their own self-interest. I mean, one of the things I think about Tacoma Park and why I moved here is because I thought people were bigger than their own self-interest. And it's really going to take people coming together to try to resolve this issue as a neighborhood and not just saying, "Well, look, there's five streets here versus this one street, and all of us could -- we could keep all of our streets clear of traffic just by, you know, continuing to force it onto this street and not coming up with an equitable and a reasonable resolution." Because my understanding is, in the end, if the people from one street come and their cars are being side-swiped and they're losing their mirrors and there's not a solution that the neighborhood can come with, it ends up in the lap of the city manager to come up with a solution that resolves what is essentially, you know, an unsafe issue in the end. And I think that the fact that I recognize that this is a problem doesn't mean that I, you know, only hear the people on Flower Avenue. It's just that it's a problem, it's a legitimate problem I recognize. And I haven't been unsympathetic to the other people either in trying to resolve their issues or try to get them together to have a solution that works for everybody. We haven't found that solution yet.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And what a beautiful lead-in to my comment for tonight, because I wanted to call everybody's attention to the public hearing that's going to be held on February 24th to discuss the traffic calming measures that are being considered for Ritchie Avenue and Geneva Avenue, but it also relates to and is part of the same public hearing at the county level for the streets just adjacent to the Ritchie Avenue neighborhood, known as the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood, which includes, and I'm not going to be able to name all the streets, but Mississippi Avenue and Parkview and some of the others. And this is an attempt to use a more coordinated approach of bringing all of the affected residents of the neighborhoods together and work in a collaborative way to find solutions that help to address it across the breadth of the neighborhood and not just street-by-street. It started out as a request from the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood to the county because they reside outside of the city at Tacoma Park. The county was coordinated that effort with the city, and so the traffic survey included not only the county portion that's outside of the city, but also our streets. And the recommendation has come back from the contractors who did the study. They have unfortunately not included the desires 100% of the neighborhoods, but the hearing, people will have an opportunity to express their opinions at the hearing on February 24th. Again, that'll be at the council meeting at 7:30. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight is the -- I know that when Pat Lovelace doesn't show up, he's here for most meetings. People ask me where he is, and I just want to let people know that our self-proclaimed peace delegate is in the hospital. He had some blood clots in his lungs. He also has pneumonia now, but he's recovering at the Washington Venice Hospital. I'm sure he'd appreciate receiving any cards from people. Thank you.
And can I just clarify? You were saying that the public hearing was at the council meeting on the 24th. That's in this room, but it's not a council meeting. That's Wednesday.
Okay. Well, I'm mistaken.
Just want to make sure people don't come here on Monday, the 22nd expecting a public hearing.
Well, I think of it as a council meeting because I certainly hope that my colleagues will be at the public hearing because it is important.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. Yes, I urge -- I do urge people to come. I've heard a lot of comments about the proposals, and I do want to clarify that decisions have not been made, despite what one might think. So there are quite a few people who would be affected who are outside those neighborhoods but live nearby. Quite a number of people in my ward are concerned about it because they go to Silver Spring through those neighborhoods. And I would just observe that the county should recognize that if any place has experience with traffic calming, it's Tacoma Park. You know, "Speed bumps are us" was the phrase I heard for quite a while. So it should be possible for the city's experience, long experience in dealing with traffic issues, that we should be able to come up with a satisfactory solution that doesn't close all the streets between Philadelphia and Sligo Avenue. Thanks.
Councilmember Robinson.
Well, the broad-based traffic calming measures in my ward proceeded, came to resolution before the traffic calming procedures that are in Collins Ward.
And you guys started after us.
And we started after you. I will very quickly review our process by saying that we did have a neighborhood association involved, Public Works Health, and so does the Department of Housing and Community Development in trying to get a sense of what people wanted and how traffic could flow. But our traffic flow was different from Carol Avenue traffic flow in that there are a number of ways to get through the neighborhoods that were being worked on by the A and B. And when we got near the end, adjoining neighborhood associations woke up and said, "And then wanted to be part of the process." And so it started in one place and it spread over time. And that was a -- I'm not saying that's a bad thing necessarily, but that was part of what happened. Tonight, in just a few minutes, we'll have Sherman Avenue talking about a speed bump. So it's kind of back to the beginning on that score, but I'm sure that we'll find a good resolution. And finally, I was at a constituent's house the other night, and he was talking about reaching consensus in a way, something he calls values-based consensus, and said that no consensus was -- his group wasn't able to reach consensus unless they were after the values that they all had agreed on initially. And I was impressed by that approach because people are encouraged to really get a sense of what's really important to them. And Ward Three, I was talking to councilmember Snipper and Schultz a little while ago, saying how in my ward and in your ward as well, colleague, there are many active citizens. And I'm going to try to implement this values-based consensus if I can, or at least approach it in some of the controversies that we have, because I think it's a worthwhile approach. And I'm hoping to say more about it in the future. And that's it.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm not going to talk about a traffic calming. All I want to do is remind my Ward Six citizens that coming up soon is Ward Six Night at the city council in this room. I've mentioned this before, and I will do so again next week. I want to see, what this is, is an opportunity for residents of Ward Six to come here a little early for a reception in the atrium, to meet the city, all the city council members, including myself, to talk about whatever's on your mind informally. And I think it's going to be a good benefit for everybody. The Ward Six Night occurs on Tuesday, not Monday, but a Tuesday. That's the night normally the council meets on Monday nights. On this occasion, it's on Tuesday night, February 16th. And I believe it starts at, what is it, 7:00? So that's like a half an hour before the normal city council meeting. So I encourage residents of Ward Six to pay attention to this and to make a point of to come down here and be present, ask questions, shake hands with whoever you want to shake hands, and say, "Oh, it's good to meet you," whoever that person might be. "I always wanted to shake your hand and tell you what I think. This is your chance to do that." How can you miss something like that? That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item, which is, there are no additional agenda items, and if I can just give a brief scheduling update. Next Monday, February 8th, among other items on the agenda, we will have a work session discussion of off-leash dog areas. As Councilmember Schultz mentioned, Tuesday, the 16th, is Ward Six Night. I'll just note that we're considering having, structuring it slightly differently from the Ward Three Night. Ward Three Night, at the beginning of the meeting, we had our usual agenda items before we got to the Ward Night, and that ended up being a good half hour of general business before we got to the Ward Night business. We thought for Ward Six, we would try continuing the discussion in the atrium, the informal discussion coming into the meeting, and continuing with that before going on to general business so that it would be, there would be more of a continuity with the Ward Six residents who come here. And depending on how long they want to talk, that might get them home a little bit earlier. So this is our second Ward Night at the council, so we're kind of adjusting and trying different things to see what works the best. And if anybody has any other suggestions for format to make this better, I'd welcome hearing them. Monday, February 22nd, there is the annual report from the city arboretum. And Monday, March 1st, we will have an update from the new county council president, Councilmember Nancy Florine. And those are just some of the highlights of upcoming agendas. The next item is adoption of minutes. We have one set of minutes before us, November 16th. Would somebody like to move their adoption? Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is public comment period. If anybody would like to comment on anything that's not on our regular agenda, we don't really have a regular agenda this evening, other than the public hearing on Sherman Avenue Speed bump, so any comments on anything other than Sherman Avenue Speed bump, welcome to make your comments. Come forward, identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the city manager's comments.
Just a few items this evening. Wanted to share with the council that I had the privilege earlier today of attending an event at the Tacoma Park Library where the Friends of Mike Morrisey presented the check from the proceeds of the golf tournament that they hold every fall. They presented Ellen Arnold Robbins with a check in the amount of $3,250 to be used for the Friends of the Library. And I see Merrill is back there. I believe that in the history of the tournament, they've now raised somewhere in the range of $41,000 and given that to the library. There was also the installation of a plaque today renaming the children's room in memory of Mike Morrisey. This was a resolution the council had passed, I believe, sometime during the summer. So I just wanted to share that with you all. Sarah Danes, our Director of Housing and Community Development, asked that I just mentioned this on TV, is the department has issued a call for public art for three projects. One is for a sculpture at the Long Branch Gateway. There was also a call for public art for site-specific public art at a number of locations, and I'll pass this around and share this with the council. And also a call for public art for the art panels at the bottom of the gateway signs. As you may recall, there was a place for public art on those. So I'll pass this around, and you all can look at that at your leisure. The last item I just wanted to follow up with the council is in regard to the auditorium project. Last week, I had sent the council kind of an update on the timing of the project as well as the funding issues, as I had mentioned in that email. One of the things that we were trying to bring to resolution was where we were financially so we could make a determination and a recommendation to the council about proceeding with the renovation of the lobby. This was something we had talked about, I guess, several months ago. Pleased to say that I do think we are in a position where we have a good enough handle on all the various issues and have analyzed how much of a cushion we have. We do think we're in good shape to proceed with the renovation of the lobby, and I just wanted to touch base with the council this evening before I signed a change order for that work and see if there's any questions that the council had from the report that I gave you last week.
Councilmember Simmons. I'm just curious, we had talked about exactly what was going to go on in the lobby, and that I think was still up in the air. Has that been finalized?
Yes. Hi, just a clarification. What do you mean, what's going to go on in the lobby?
There was discussion not only of changing the entrance to the new auditorium, but also change the location of the desk.
Yes, the proposal, if we would go through with the change order, would move the desk to the corner kind of closest to this room. It does do the option which closes off two of the four doors, the set of doors on the right-hand side going from the lobby into the atrium and making that a window. There was a slight modification from one of the, from some of the discussion that was presented to you, which simplifies the desk a bit. It's not quite as curved. It saves money, but it also works a little bit better for the staff with a small, with an angled wall behind it, behind which a copy machine and some storage could take place. It has a similar thing with acoustic panels to limit the sound in the lobby, and it would allow, in the area where the current reception desk is, some kind of comfortable seating, some chairs and that kind of thing. It almost gives a little bit of a living room feel to it, which is kind of a useful thing for all the folks who are waiting for their kids to finish a program or that kind of thing. And it's also comfortable and has little ottoman kinds of things. We're still choosing, you know, options for furniture and looking at that, but for people who bring their laptops in and want to use the Wi-Fi to sit there for a bit. The proposal does continue having kind of a nice finish to the front of the reception desk, but it does allow for a freer flow through the lobby, and it allows the staff at the reception desk to see to the rear entrance of the building, which functions really as the main entrance, while also allowing them to look through the window to see the entrance at the bridge, which is very helpful. Part of the proposal would be to bring the vending machines back to the lobby, actually very close, just opposite the elevator at the Grant Avenue entrance with a little bit of a half-wall so that you don't just see Coca-Cola or something from the lobby, but to be We've got a copy of the little diagram that has been specked out. It, in many respects, very similar to what you'd seen before, but it's a, you know, refined and a little less expensive option.
Right. I know that when that was last presented to council at a, at a meeting, following that, there was a lot of discussion between council members and feeling that there was dissatisfaction with the plan and several suggestions on how it should go forward. And I was just curious with my colleagues of whether we want to discuss that any further or just probably go forward the way it is.
Well, I do, at the end of that discussion, there was, there was some straw polling on a number of the elements, and all of the elements that the council favored in those straw polls are incorporated in the final plan.
Councilmember Schultz.
I recall in that presentation that there was some concern that having one set of doors to get back and forth from the lobby to this area, the area would be insufficient in certain instances when everyone was coming out of the auditorium. And I know we have a back entrance to, to the auditorium, which would alleviate some of that. But has any thought been given to what would happen if it's determined that it's just a giant traffic jam trying to get in or out? Do we, can we, can we say, well, that one didn't work, we'll just?
We could make some modifications. I mean, it would cost a little bit. The, you know, we're not changing the pillars, where the doors are.
Right.
You know, I mean, you take the window back out and you put doors back in. I think that, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a risk, but I, you know, we've been watching it pretty closely, and it is useful that we have the two entrances to the auditorium to help alleviate and disperse groups. One of the things that we've also been doing is meeting with some, with the CUDC group on some operations procedures for the auditorium. And some of the discussions can involve, depending on what kind of event may be happening, basically some direction as to, gee, you're going in this way and coming out that way, depending on the kind of activity or whatever. So they're going to give us some advice. They've walked the area, they've seen the plans, and are giving-
CUDC, DVC?
CUDC, the Cultural Development Corporation, that's giving us some advice on auditorium operations.
Presented to us at some point about-
Absolutely. Yeah.
About entertainment and so forth.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Klein.
I'd like to see the redesign plan.
Sure. I thought we had sent the, but I'll make sure that they, okay. Oh, okay. I'll make sure you all have it.
I'd like to see them, and I would like not to see junk food machines in the lobby.
One of the things that I do, would like to let you know is that we've talked some and we've not finalized it, but we probably do need to go out for proposals for the kind of food and beverages that might be in machines. So there may be some interest in kind of defining what should go in that request for proposals.
Well, I, I think I guess I would like the council to have a discussion about that also, around-
Yeah, I agree.
What we end up with there, and if we're going to have them for, you know, kids after school, what's going to be in them? If they're really going to be for the auditorium when people are using it, can we lock them up at other times? And I guess it'd be interesting to see if there is cause instead to have a little snack stand to be operated instead of vending machines that people could operate when they're using the auditorium for theater activities. I know that some of the schools, Eastern Middle School anyway, has a little snack stand that it has after school. I don't see why we couldn't do something like that, but I'm just-
Yes, sports options.
Yeah, I just am not really, I'm not into the vending machines thing.
Just to move that, carry that idea forward a little bit. If the auditorium is used the way I know a lot of people would like to see it used, that's 150 people, potentially 150 people in there, and have a break, and if it's an intermission, what's anticipated? That everyone comes out and lines up in front of the vending machines? Or, as Colleen says, would, would there be some other op, option or?
Well, that's, that also is something, one of the things that CUDC has mentioned is that they do have some, they do do some vending as part of some of the operations that they have of some of the venues that they actually manage.
That CUDC would come and do vending?
No, they would give us, they would tell us some options about when it works, if it makes money, if, or if it costs us money and those kinds of things. So that's, that would be interesting to see from that. No, I don't anticipate, you know, 150 people lining up for a vending machine, but I do think-
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of what-
But I do-
Councilmember Clay is alluding to. I think it's a good point.
Yeah.
And I'm glad that CUDC is going to give us some feedback. And I hope that you, I agree with, with Councilmember Clay that we have to be cognizant of what we have in our public places, and if it's junk food in the machine, well, that's then what we're saying is what we think is of value is junk food in the machine, so. And, you know, I don't mean to cast aspersions on all the snack food manufacturers out there.
Councilmember Schultz, put that can down.
Yeah, we've got the chips and the various things along here.
Do as I say.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, I have, I have Ocean Spray, no sugar added, cranberry and pomegranate.
I got water.
Okay.
My sense is that the council will want to discuss vending options, and my sense is that the council will come down with a very healthy option for vending options. What do you need from us this evening?
Well, it would be very useful to, if you are comfortable enough to agree to have us proceed with the change order, because there's a time delay related to ordering the window that would go, and we'd like to move that along. But I'd like to share the plans and make sure that, you know, people are comfortable with that.
Why don't we say that you'll get us the plans this week, and we'll get back to you this week?
Yeah, we'll get them right out.
We'll look at them at the break?
Yes.
Okay.
If that would be workable.
And I will schedule a vending discussion.
Okay.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. I'm also wondering if the vending discussion might not affect the, the plans for the lobby. I know that many facilities that serve especially young people have a little snack bar area where if we're going to actually vend things, it might make sense to have such a thing in the lobby rather than having, if we're going to do that in lieu of vending machines, that there might need to be a counter design and put in as part of it.
I will say that we internally have given an awful lot of thought about placement of vending machines and location of where people might sit while they eat things. And one of the things that we've looked at very carefully is not trying to have large groups of people at the rear entrance of the building that kind of block that main entrance, that just, that we keep things to a reasonable roar in terms of loudness. And I know that one of the things, we have had the vending machines in the police lobby while the construction's been going on, and the sound carrying up through the atrium is just very difficult. I mean, when I can hear everything in my office, it's three levels down, it really is very difficult for many people. So we've, we've given a lot of thought to placement. The lobby almost seems to work the best as a place to keep, to kind of limit sound and to keep things within eyesight and that kind of thing, but-
But where in the lobby is the question, is that your question?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, there's not a lot of space. I'm happy to show kind of some of the options that we looked at, happy to talk with you, Councilmember, about the, some of the things. But I think it's, you know, we really don't have a good lounge for just eating. Obviously, people can take some stuff to the teen lounge, and we encourage that for those.
All I'm saying is if we're going to, if we're going to take Councilmember Clay's suggestion of having a vending area where people are actually serving the, the food, then we may, would need to think about how that would be done and where that'd be placed before we-
Right. And that may very well be something that would be best be mobile. I think one of the things that we did look at in terms of the center part of the lobby with the idea of kind of comfortable chairs that would function, they're also easily removable, so if we need a larger just open space for some reception or other kind of event, that we have the option of, of making it like that. So we're trying to keep things open, see how they go. We may want to group things differently or have some different kinds of tables or whatever as, as we experiment with it.
And my sense is that it could easily be a movable vending cart.
Exactly. Could easily be that.
So-
We will bring the plans down and have them available at the break.
Okay.
Make sure you're comfortable with them.
So we'll have a little bit longer break than usual, and we will take a look at that and hopefully provide direction.
Okay. Good, thank you.
That's it.
Thanks. We'll now move on to the public hearing on Sherman Avenue Speed Bump Request. This is a petition requesting installation of speed bump in the unit block of Sherman Avenue, and it's been certified by the city clerk as having met the minimum number of signatures required. And do we, did we have a sign up?
Are you supposed to sign?
It's just, if there was one and people were signed up, we'll take them first, then we'll take anybody else.
I think nobody signed up.
It may be that nobody signed up.
One name was scratched out.
That's all right. You don't have to sign it, Kay. Since the one name on the sign up was scratched out, we'll take anybody who wants to speak at the public hearing to speak about the Sherman Avenue Speed Hump Request, if you can go to the podium.
The safety of the podium.
Don't lean on it too hard, it'll collapse.
I'm here with two hats on. One is President of SS Carroll, and the other one is a Sherman Avenue resident, a longtime Sherman Avenue resident. We're asking that you grant the requested speed bump hump, I don't know what we call them anymore, speed bump, hump, or, or table to be placed in the flat block of Sherman Avenue between number 17 and number 18, so as not to block any of the three driveways, because right there, there are actually three driveways. We've seen the traffic calming devices on Maple Avenue Hill, and that's what we'd like on Sherman Avenue. They certainly seem to slow the traffic down. The other device is the one on Maple Avenue just adjacent to Kennebec, no, to Erie, which is a huge beast that slows everything down quite a lot. My option would be an electronic device that as soon as someone hit 25 miles an hour, spikes came up and, and negotiated their tires, but I don't think that's a possibility, but that's what I would like. Let's see. We presented the petition, which includes the signatures of 30 of the possible 33 property owners on Sherman Avenue. The missing three were, were not available during the petition signing. This action was requested by the residents over a year ago, but I was unable to take any action on it until this fall, and I'm committed to taking it to completion. There are approximately 20 children, six grandchildren, plus 20 other children that either play or ride their bikes on the flat block of Sherman Avenue, or use it as a street to go to and from school. There are many times when the cars coming up the hill do not stop at the Hancock stop sign and hit the flat at about 40-plus miles per hour. The traffic coming from Carroll Avenue may be a tiny bit slower, but often they run the stop sign as well going down the hill. It causes anybody trying to back out of their, I mean, you can look and, and begin to back out of your, your driveway, but you got to look about 15 more times because they're coming at you from both sides. This, a speed hump or bump or table would certainly assist in calming the traffic on Sherman Avenue. This is indeed an issue that would help with the safety for our children, their pets, and the adult residents as well. And I'm thanking you for your time and interest in, in this request. I do have someone else from the flat of Sherman Avenue here if he wants to speak, and I don't, there's someone from the hill section of Sherman also. I don't know if he wants to speak or not. But we'd really appreciate it if you, if you'd go ahead and, and pass this speed bump, hump, or flat, whatever works.
Okay, we're going to adopt the, the British rule and call them speed umps.
Okay. All right. Well, I didn't, I didn't know what to call it. It's spoken of-
Sleeping gleezman.
Yeah, okay. It's a few, a few different ways in the, in the documentation, so I didn't want it to be the flat kind, the really flat kind that's up by the Presbyterian Church, something with large spikes in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So you just have moral support here?
Yeah. I had a bunch of more, but I said it was too cold for them to come. These people are wonderful.
Final call for anybody testifying on the speed hump request petition. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the work session discussion of the Sherman Avenue Speed Bump Request. And I guess we're calling them bumps, because we don't want to put up signs that say hump ahead.
I think the hump terminology is being discontinued, am I right?
I think so, too.
My understanding of the speed bump are the ones that are, you have to go over at five miles per hour or under and are typically in parking lots, and everything else is a hump. But I'll, I'll look it up and see what the current-
Please do.
-terminology is.
Would the Public Works Director like to talk to us about what the city engineer, Public Works Director, whoever else has weighed in on it?
Well, the city engineer did go out to the site and did some measurements, as we always do every time there's a request for this. And, and I can proceed to lay out the specifics of the block and the street. I think Kay has done a, a good illustration of the, the situation. There's currently a speed bump for, we'll just call it that, in the middle of the block. My assumption is that it was placed there in compliance with the city code, which has language that says speed humps need to be 200 feet from a stop sign. There's a stop sign at both Carroll and at Hancock, and the speed hump was placed equidistant, basically. It's 250 feet from Carroll Avenue and 280 feet from Hancock Avenue. The request from the community is to add an additional speed hump between the existing speed hump and Hancock Avenue, so to put one kind of equidistant between those two locations. At that location, it would be about 110 feet from the stop sign and 170 feet from the existing speed hump. As the city engineer went out and took a look at the site, his thought was it may make more sense in terms of traffic calming to take out the existing speed hump and relocate two that would be, split the block basically in thirds. That's an option for both the community and the council to consider. At this point, we have a new vendor installing speed humps, and the cost of a speed hump ranges from $750 to $1,000, depending on the type that's selected. Let's see, any other details?
The removal cost?
The removal cost will be a couple of hundred dollars. We can put a full package together. I think it's the city engineer's opinion that with a speed hump that close to a stop sign and another speed hump, you're basically going to have a half of the block where people will, by necessity, travel very slowly, and it may encourage them to then really zoom for that last half a block because they've just kind of, a stop sign, a bump, another bump, and then they proceed to the, to the stop sign. So his recommendation was that we spread out the speed humps so they more evenly match the street. Having said that, though, it would not be in compliance with the city code. The council has chosen in the past to, to step outside the definition in the city code and, and allow speed humps at locations of closer distance, both to intersections as well as to each other. So that is, is something that the council has, has done in the past.
And if I can just, I'll get to everybody in a second. I just had one question about, and I think people who've been around for, for speed hump petition requests will recognize my question, because I know I bring it up fairly often, and I don't remember how we're dealing with this. The, the sense was that we were trying to move toward away from requests for specific locations and toward requests for blocks or streets or however it is. And so here we have a request for a particular location. If the, if the first speed hump had been put in with language addressing, you know, placing speed hump or humps in the unit block of Sherman Avenue, then an adjustment of maybe moving the, the existing one and adding a second- of Sherman Avenue, then an adjustment of maybe moving the existing one and adding a second one would essentially be a different process than has been going, the neighborhood is going through here, or the same process?
Well, my understanding is if the original ordinance had allowed for additional submissions, then that would be something that would handle administratively within the city. My understanding through Jesse, the city clerk, is that there wasn't, that the existing ordinance didn't speak to anything other than one installation.
I guess, I would request that whatever we might do in addressing this request, that we provide language in however we authorize it so that there is that flexibility in the future, rather than addressing a request for a particular speed hump in a particular location and saying, yes, that's where it goes, or no, our direction is to remove the existing one and place a second one if we pass, whatever we pass to say, that the Public Works Department will, you know, address this request, and, you know, we see the need for, you know, two, but we're not saying particular locations. Provide some flexibility in this and in other requests that come forward, then it might make it a little easier, rather than getting into the minutia of a particular placement at a particular spot, so many feet from a curb cut or whatever it is, because we can't determine that anyway, that the engineer will essentially do it. So, with that general caveat, there were a number of hats. Councilor Snibber.
Yes. I'm very much in favor of the two bumps, and the reason is quite simple. On Erie Avenue where I live, when I first moved in there, we would have, there were no speed bumps, and the corner at Erie and Maple was kind of a broad curve, and it allowed people to go up that cut-through street very rapidly. You'd just be going up Maple, you'd turn right on Erie, and it'd get you to Flower in no time. And we had an accident on average of about once every three months of people not, Erie is fairly narrow, has a turn, there's a place where you can't see cars coming. So, every three months, we'd have some kind of an accident there, fender bender, somebody didn't make a turn, they'd hit the pole, whatever. The, you know, neighborhood put in for, you know, changes and speed bumps, et cetera, and the city engineer said, well, our suggestion is to change the intersection and put in two speed bumps. And the neighborhood said, well, we don't really see why we need to change the intersection, but with the two speed bumps, sounds like a great idea. All three of those changes were made, and in the decades since then, we've had, I don't know, one or two accidents in the entire time. It really does change the way people view and how they go up those streets. So, I really strongly urge putting two in. I just think that's a great way to go.
Councilor Robinson.
Kay, I see you back there. No need to go to the podium, but I'll mimic your head movement when you say, when you tell me by moving your head whether you think two speed bumps, taking out the existing one and putting two is a good idea or a bad idea. So, shake your head like this if you think it's an okay idea, and shake your head like this, or go to the podium, or go to the podium.
I don't want the second one removed. That one needs to be there, too. That at least slows people down somewhat.
I think what the, what the table is to have two, but just take the one that's out and put two in place, spread out so that it splits the block into thirds. Can you envision that?
I can envision it, but before I even went to this kind of trouble, I went to Maple Avenue and to several other places and measured the distances. There's no consistency, really.
No, but we have, we have a criteria that Public Works, so, and if I have it right, 280 and 250 is getting close to 600 feet, so splitting the difference would put them about 200 feet apart, maybe 180 feet apart. If I'm, rather than having one tucked up to 110 near Hancock, is what I heard. So, are you in general okay with splitting the distance on that block?
Yes.
Thank you. I support this petition.
Councilor McLean.
All right. Institute of Traffic Engineers says that I am correct. They are speed humps if it's six miles an hour and over. So, the things that you run over on Sligo Creek Parkway are humps. It's questionable what we have in Tacoma Park since we have the modified speed pump. I've always argued it's a bump because I can rarely go over it at more than five miles an hour.
And they're posted for five miles an hour.
And they're posted for five miles an hour, which I think makes them a speed bump.
I think we should call them speed umps, and then when you go over, you go oom, like that.
We can also call them vertical deflectors.
Vertical deflectors.
So, we could change the sign, vertical deflector ahead. That'll trick people.
I was looking at, trying to figure out what that means.
That's right. And they'll really know they're in Tacoma Park.
After they hit, they hit a few, man, they'll know.
Vertical deflectors.
They'll deflect at us.
That's right. I just want to say that I don't, I don't want to see a lot of Maple Avenue speed bumps in the city. I think that they, I think that they damage vehicles. We had a speed bump that was installed on Elm Avenue in the 1,000 block of Elm, and I swear it was like a railroad tie. And I actually couldn't go over on my motorcycle, so to get past that part of the street until somebody came and they ground it down, it got a little bit better, but I had to essentially ride my motorcycle around the sidewalk to get over it, because to go slow enough, the, because of the front fork, it causes the, it causes it to compress, which makes the wheel pop up to go over it. I mean, so I imagine that a bicyclist would also be pained to go over such a speed bump, and it's not so bad for the bicyclist to go on the sidewalk, but for the motorcycle to go on the sidewalk, maybe it's really not the most optimum thing. I do understand that people want more aggressive speed bumps, but I think we can do that without fallen tree trunks across the road. That's just, to me, it's just not fair to make all the other residents pay for that in vehicle repair costs. We already have to have extra vehicle repair costs because of all the potholes. Let's, so what, those are, I don't know what those would be called. They're not, whatever the opposite of vertical deflectors are, but, yeah, I'm not really for the fallen tree trunk approach to speed bumps.
The, we do have a city standard speed bump, and the council, when it approved the variance from that design on Maple Avenue, said this is variance for Maple Avenue and Maple Avenue only because of various circumstances that had to do with where ride-on buses went and the size of ride-on buses and the fuel on ride-on buses, and...
Have you ever been on a ride-on bus going over those bumps?
It's terrible.
This is a lawsuit waiting to happen. We're going to get sued under 88.
And so, and so, at the time, people very reluctantly said, okay, but we're never going to do another one. And I think that for everybody who was on the council at that point in time, they would be, love to have the opportunity to, if ever, to revisit that and say, and furthermore, those are coming out. That was the worst decision we ever made. So...
Oh, but was it a great council meeting?
So, I don't think there's much danger of anybody getting a replica of a Maple Avenue speed bump.
The one on Elm was by mistake. The contractor made a mistake.
And so, if, did you have some, that official?
I know we're speaking of standard sizes for speed humps. Do we have a standard size for potholes?
Yes, as small as possible.
Ah.
Let me just say a word, not to extend this too long, just so there's not confusion out there. The city does have a standard design for what we call the city standard speed hump. There's also a Montgomery County standard speed hump that we use in our design specifications. The best example I can say of the difference is the Montgomery County speed humps are three inches high, 12 feet wide, and you'll see them on Sligo Creek Parkway. They're posted for 20 miles an hour, so that's a speed hump that you can safely pass at 20 miles an hour. The city standard speed hump is kind of a sinusoidal shape, where you've got a hump on top of a bump. It's posted for five miles an hour, and it has a rise, and then it has a middle section that's higher, and then it goes down again. It also extends 12 feet.
It's a bump on top of a hump.
A bump on top of a hump. They're both the same, the same width. I think that that oftentimes surprises people that are, that a speed hump actually takes 12 feet of space, but it does, six feet on either side. And that's a consideration when we're installing them, as to finding a space that will fit with a distance of 12 feet in between. The other issue that's come up before is whether or not the city can design or bless a bicycle-friendly speed hump. And the city engineer and I have spent quite a bit of time looking at the design standards that are available, and we have not found an engineered, designed bicycle-friendly speed hump that we're comfortable emulating or repeating in the city of Tacoma Park. Our recommendation to that end is to just narrow the dimensions of the speed hump so that there's more space between the curb and gutter and the start of the speed hump, so that there'll at least be a two-foot-wide section for bikes to pass by. Now, of course, if a car parks there, that access route is unavailable, but it does provide some way for passing the speed hump that would not allow traffic to get out of its drive lane. That's our largest concern with any kind of cuts or depressions within an existing speed hump. Oftentimes, drivers will swerve to get their wheels in the depression, and it could take them out of their lane. And on our streets, which don't have a clear, you know, we don't have yellow center lines, you have to share the road, so it would be an unsafe situation. So, our recommendation is we narrow the dimension so that it don't extend quite so far as the gutter pan.
And are you recommending that that would be kind of part of the standard design, that we wouldn't have to specify?
Yeah, we could, we could also. On this particular street, there are sidewalks on both sides as well, so perhaps it's a little less concerned than in some streets where there aren't sidewalks.
Councilor Robinson.
Last point. I don't remember what the quote was for the cost of speed bumps in the past, but I do remember that a table through an intersection was 10 times what a bump was.
Yes, much more expensive, about $5,000.
So, is the, is the price that you quoted, did you say 750 to 1,000 for a hump, pump, whatever, a hump, is that the standard price? Is that a continuation of what we were paying before?
We have a new contractor. We just went out to bid last summer for a new indefinite quantities contract, so we have a new vendor that's come in, and their price is a little bit less than the price that we were at previously with our past contractor.
Okay.
The prices were increasing. We don't quite understand why the city speed hump is 750 and the county standard is 1,000. They typically use about the same amount of asphalt. We do require that the contractor use a template when building our speed humps, because it's not something you can eyeball. It's not something you can just make work. You have to make sure that your dimensions are according to the design.
So, if I can recommend that we go ahead with basically fulfilling the neighborhood request, and that the language that comes back provides the flexibility that might be good in the future for something like this, and that it be something, I just was jotting down a note, that it might be something like, that we would providing additional, we'd be providing additional bump or bumps in the unit block of Sherman Avenue. That way, there's flexibility to do the two, to take the first one out, spread them, and then if some other issue comes up in the future, it can be addressed by the Public Works Department and the city engineer to reconfigure whatever is needed based on the circumstances. So, is that agreeable to everybody?
I betcha.
Okay. Thank you. We will come back, I think, next week with a first reading. Okay. Let's go to the next item, which is the discussion of the public works facility renovation, discussion of the effect of possibly doing something different with sanitation services.
Tonight's discussion is a follow-up to the January 4th work session, at which the council talked about the planned public works facility renovation and some different options in terms of how to provide certain city services. As staff indicated in the agenda packet on January 4th, probably if there's an area that the council desires to look at, we would recommend a review of how we provide sanitation services. As mentioned in the cover memo, approximately 25, 20% of the estimated $3 million cost of renovating the public works facility would be attributable to sanitation building. As the council may recall, the existing structure has significant problems and is scheduled to be demolished and rebuilt as part of the facility renovation. Considering the different ways to provide sanitation services actually goes back to the work that was done by the TASD committee a number of years ago. Obviously, two members of the sitting council were part of the TASD group. In their 2005 report to the city council, this was one of the issues TASD addressed, and at that time, did not recommend that the city consider coming under the county contract. In preparation for tonight's discussion, one of the things that staff did was to go back and try to provide a comparison of cost under the county contract versus the per-household cost for Tacoma Park residents under the current arrangement where the city is providing sanitation services directly. And just like TASD, I would say it's a very difficult analysis for a number of reasons, and I'll just touch on those very briefly. City sanitation services are property tax funded. There are only a certain group of property owners in the city, however, who receive sanitation service as part of their core contract, I mean, I'm sorry, core services. So, basically, anyone who owns property in the city is contributing to the cost of sanitation service that single-family homeowners are receiving. Those who own multi-family properties, depending on their size, can receive service from the city, but it's on a fee basis. So, to some extent, every property owner in the city is contributing to the cost of sanitation service for those who own single-family properties. The county actually provides service under a different mechanism. It is a flat fee basis that appears on everyone's property tax bill. So, if you're getting sanitation service now as a Tacoma Park resident, it is paid for through your property taxes, and obviously, that's deductible on your income taxes. If you are a county resident who does not reside in Tacoma Park, then it is a fee on your property tax bill, and fees are not deductible on your income taxes. So, there are some differences there. When we talked about this on January 4th, I had provided the council with a figure for service under the current county contract for Area 4, which is the area that Tacoma Park is in the proximity of, and that figure was $378.81. And as I noted at that time, that did include leaf vacuum services. There is an option actually under the county contract where you can basically get sanitation service, but elect not to receive leaf vacuuming as part of that, and that fee is currently $284.85. Part of the reason I say currently is the county is in the process of getting bids for its sanitation services. They will be issuing a request for proposal for this area on or around June 1st. So, the timing of the council's discussion is very apropos, if this is something that you wish to explore, because we would have the opportunity to basically have the city of Tacoma Park service territory included in the county proposal process.
Can I get a clarification on something you just said?
Sure.
The, the option to get the leaf collection service or not is an option that the city could have? Is that an option in the current county contract for areas or individual property owners?
I believe it is by areas. And in my dis...
Because I couldn't believe that it was individual properties where they would go up and down the block and, you know, leave, leave leaves.
No, and I think if we, this is something the council chose to do, you would be making a decision of what level of service you wanted provided to this entire corporate boundary of Tacoma Park. But there is some flexibility in terms of what options you would have. One of the, I think, challenges that we had, just like TASD did, is trying to work through the differences in the funding sources, but we did take our best shot at it, and included in the packet, and I'd like to, there's a lot of notes to this, probably almost as long as the financial analysis, but what we tried to do is go through and give the council at least a sense of what households in Tacoma Park are paying on a per-household basis under the current system, and looking ahead a little bit to FY 2011, and then how that compares to the county contract. As you look through the sheet, there's probably half a page of figures and half a page of footnotes, so that'll give you some idea of how complex this is. A number of things that made it particularly difficult is there's just a lot of unknowns, especially looking forward for the city. We are in the process of examining other options for workers' compensation insurance. We do not yet have a sense of what we will be recommending to the council. What I can tell you is that we are looking at probably an increase in the city's workers' comp cost, primarily due to bad climate. at probably an increase in the city's workers' comp cost primarily due to bad claims experience. So, we've had a kind of a bad loss record, so that is under the current system. There are a number of municipalities who, like us, participate in the Montgomery County Self-Insurance Program who are now examining other options just because the quotes from the county pool are considerably higher. Our options are somewhat more limited mainly because we do have a police department. If you are a workers' compensation insurance carrier, that's not exactly viewed as a plus just because of the rate of injury. And I would say similarly, sanitation workers have actually a very high workers' compensation cost associated with that line of work because of the number of injuries as well. So, that's a big unknown. The analysis that's in the packet basic is reflective of an option that we have under consideration and working with that provider, we have come up with at least an estimate of what we think our workers' compensation costs relative to sanitation will be for next year. We are scheduled to buy two sanitation trucks for next year, so if you notice on the spreadsheet, you'll see an increase in the vehicle depreciation costs that we are estimating from FY 10, FY 2011. I would note that the depreciation costs for FY 2011 only reflect six months of having those two new trucks in service, just because of the long lead time. So, if we were to try to do an analysis for FY 12, those vehicle depreciation costs would increase because you'd have those new trucks in service for the entire year. Similarly, we tried to ballpark what the depreciation cost would be for the new sanitation structure if it is in fact built for FY 11. So, that's some of the unknowns that we're trying to deal with. When you look through all the numbers, and one thing I would just note for the council is in looking at this this morning, I should have included a figure for the depreciation cost for the leaf vacuums and things like that. So, the per household cost for, under the current structure, would actually be a few dollars higher per household. Bottom line with all those disclaimers, it's very, very close financially in terms of what the cost is currently under the city system versus the current county contract price. I would expect because of the new structure, the new trucks, that the per household cost for city residents maintaining our own sanitation service would certainly go up in FY 2011. The piece I obviously can't tell you is what that would look like under the county contract next year since they're in the process of bidding it. I wish I probably had more definitive numbers to give the council this evening to help you in your decision-making. Unfortunately, given the unknowns, that's not something that we're in the position to do. The county is more than willing to come and talk to the council about the services they provide. Actually, she did offer to come here this evening, but I thought that might be a little bit premature depending on what direction you wanted to go. As I mentioned in the cover memo, one of the options that the county staff did discuss with me is if the city wants to pursue having service provided under the county contract rather than providing sanitation with our own workforce, is that one of the provisions in their RFP for this area could be that any contractor who was selected would have to employ the current members of the city sanitation division. That was something that they were open to including as a provision in their contract documents. In terms of the public works facility itself, as I mentioned at the very beginning of my remarks, it is a fairly significant portion of the planned renovation cost as we talked about in early January. Some portion of that building would still need to be constructed even if the council chose to have service provided under the county contract mainly because that portion of the building would be used for storing right-of-way division equipment. But we would have probably construction savings of about $384,000 by not building the structure as originally envisioned. One of the things Darryl and I have talked about quite a bit is if the council wanted to take more time to sort of consider this and to kind of keep your options open while keeping the public works project moving, is that we could have the architect kind of design the modified structure, the smaller-scale building, include that as a bid alternate and, you know, have actual numbers for you to work with. There obviously is a cost of designing that modified structure. I had put in the cover memo, it was in the range of $25,000. We got a new quote earlier today, so it would probably be design fees of about $20,000. Obviously, if the council is inclined to continue providing sanitation service in the manner that we currently do, then there's no need to incur that cost. The timing's probably a little bit awkward because I think the architect right now would be ready to go out to bid on the public works project later this month. If the council wants the architectural firm to design a modified building and just so you can kind of have a little bit more time to think about this, it would take about 30 days, I think, to design the modified structure. So, I know that's kind of a lot of information to throw at you. Probably the last piece that I would just mention and would encourage you to consider just as part of your decision-making process is that the sanitation division does essentially constitute a second shift when we have any type of snow response that requires more than 12 hours. Typically, I would have thought that was something fairly significant, you know, not, certainly not something akin to the December snowstorm, but not doing what Darryl does for a living, I wouldn't have thought this past weekend would have been significant enough to warrant a second shift, but apparently, it was. So, it doesn't take a lot of snow before we do rely on those people. I know Councilmember Wright had inquired what options there might be to provide that second shift, you know, if the council were to want to provide sanitation service in a different way. Darryl and I have also talked about that. I think our recommendation would be to probably explore contracting for that service rather than bringing in temporary workers. If you have someone who's not familiar with your streets or familiar with your equipment, and I think with a temporary agency, you're probably less likely to get the same person returning. There might just be all sorts of problems associated with that. But I think we would need to probably explore a little bit further how we can ensure that we could still provide a timely response for snow removal since I think that's something residents have come to expect. So, that is an issue we'd have to work on a little bit more.
If I can just get a clarification on one thing, I want to make sure I understand correctly the impact of the part that you talked about where you say that all owners of real property contribute to the cost of the sanitation services, so the household cost may be overstated. That you have in your calculations here, the number of single-family households is 3,600, and did you essentially use that 3,600 figure to divide up the costs so that that's assuming that in that...
They're variable.
To come up with a number for comparison purposes here, it's assuming that only single-family homeowners pay for this service.
That is correct.
When in fact, it's being paid for by the taxes from businesses, from...
Anyone who owns real property.
Anybody who owns real property in the city.
Right. This was sort of the same approach. I think the TASD took just simply because if you're trying to...
You have to do something.
You have to do something, and I think if you try to factor in all property, I think it's very difficult to try to come up with a per household cost. So, we were trying to look at it from the cost that a single-family household would pay under the county contract and trying to correlate that in some way to what someone is paying under the current arrangement. It's not a perfect analysis, admittedly.
Do you have any sense of the proportion of the property tax that's paid by single-family property owners as opposed to all property owners in the city?
I probably want to talk to the finance director. I mean, certainly, we're a predominantly residential community, but that doesn't necessarily correlate to the value of the property itself.
Right. So, I didn't know whether it might represent half the value of the properties that are taxed or 90% or something in between those two.
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I'd certainly be happy to follow up with Yvonne, does she may have a better idea than I do.
Because to the extent that that is the case, it could significantly skew the current per household cost and make it significantly higher than it really is. So, that if the costs were backed out and it reduced the tax burden on property owners, the effective reduction for the single-family homeowners who get the service now would be much less than the $258 per year that this figure represents.
I think that's probably true. I think one of the difficulties in doing this, particularly since, you know, the county contract is about to change, is trying to look at this from a longer time horizon rather than just sort of a snapshot in time. Certainly, I think the per household cost is probably overstated, which was one of the footnotes. Obviously, one of the things about continuing to have your own sanitation service is that you get into the investment of vehicles over a long period of time, which admittedly are very expensive.
And that was a question in the next agenda item, there's something about the savings resulting from going to the mixed recycling and requiring one less of the packers for the recycling route. Are the figures here based on that new reality so that it's, looks like four trucks? And that constitutes kind of maybe we used to need five and we wouldn't replace the fifth one, we would keep it as a backup, but we wouldn't necessarily go out and replace it. And is that reflected in the equipment replacement reserve?
Well, we have two trucks needed for trash and one for recycling. We keep a truck spare. So, we have four trucks, three are needed, and our equipment replacement reflects the replacement of all those.
Reflects those four only, but it was reflecting that we didn't really have a backup because we needed the two trucks for the recycling and the two for the trash.
We always had a third trash truck. We used to have two recycling trucks and three trash trucks. We had five.
So, that that reduction from five to four has already washed through all of these figures and it doesn't affect...
Right. These are the vehicles that are currently on the city's fixed asset list, and the depreciation costs are those that we are carrying for the audit, for the audited figures.
I'll just make one or two more quick comments and go to my colleagues for your thoughts. As I looked through this agenda item and started reading through it before I saw that there was this half-page of figures with notes, I was kind of doing my own little notes as I went through, and as I was doing it, I thought, oh, I guess this makes sense to shed sanitation. And then the more I read, the more I went, oh, now I'm not so sure. And it got to the point where I was feeling like numbers only take me so far, and then it's up to those intangibles. And for me, the intangibles were the extent to which the numbers don't accurately reflect what single-family homeowners would see as a real savings in their tax rate if we did shed sanitation because of just what we've been talking about with all taxpayers, all property owners paying for it, the fact that the fee isn't a tax write-off where the tax is, which is some other little increment, depending on the individual situation and how that all works, and the intangible of the value of the second shift for snow or any other similar situations like that. And I don't know, it's hard to quantify the value of having that shift available. I wonder if we were to go out and try and contract for the second 12-hour shift from somebody to provide that, whether, how readily available that service might be and how good they might be just because when we need people to do that snow plowing, everybody needs somebody to do that snow plowing. And my feeling is that many, if not most, of the good ones to provide that service are already under long-term contracts.
I mean, I think you invite a lot of standards into, you know, ultimately, it's performance standards. You know, when you're expecting them to come out, I mean, I have that on my own street. It's a private street. You know, when they come out, it's probably not going to be as timely a response as you probably see from a city, but I think it ultimately gets down to what level of service does the council want to provide. And certainly, I think once we have a clear understanding of that, we could certainly reach out and give proposals and see what we could work out.
So, I was left overall feeling like it was a, starting out thinking it was a fairly clear-cut case that we shed the service, and then it became a lot more muddled than that, and I wasn't at all sure. Other thoughts?
I was just going to say that there might be some home improvement vendors that have trucks that might want to do snow plowing in the city.
Who want to run their front suspension into our speed hump? I don't think so. You know, we'll start down there. Councilwoman Robinson?
Actually, I think that there are, I know of a couple of private contractors who would love to do more work for the city regardless of this becomes, although I appreciate the value of a second shift in-house. But I, I'm a believer in keeping wealth here in our community, including taxes or income from our own wealth, to spend it where we are. And so, to have, to spend the money on our own services and on our own personnel, I think is of value. So, that's where I came from when I started reading this. On the other hand, and on the other side of that, I think that we have limited resources, and I wonder if we're the right-sized community to have full-service sanitation. So, that's a question. Our others, when does a city get big enough to have its own million-dollar four-truck sanitation service? And are we there? So, that's kind of a question that maybe you can respond to, but let me ask, let me go through the various points I have. And another thing to consider, I think, is that do we have a better use for our public workspace, which is also a limited resource? So, if we shed the sanitation use or service, would we, would that be, would that have value in some other use in our public workplace? And then finally, when I consider the county providing this service, I envision trucks traveling many miles to do the whole county, and I wonder if that's an efficient use of their resources. So, that's kind of an economy of scale versus keeping things local issue. So, Darryl, the question I have, the two questions then are, are we right-sized and is there another use for the public workspace?
I think you will find that many, many jurisdictions of our size have their own sanitation service. I think a major driver of that is control of the service. And when you're hiring the staff and having the trucks and designing the routes, you have total control for what service levels you provide, the quality of the service and the standards. You can peg it to a T. As soon as you step out and have a contractual relationship, you can certainly put that in writing, but it adds a level of difficulty in terms of the standard that you're trying to receive. And then you end up with overhead costs of contract administration versus the staff itself. Obviously, not comparative, but if we were to go with the county service, we'd still have to have somebody in the city who is overseeing complaints and checking up and working with the contractor and, you know, determining what kind of promotion education campaigns we need to do so there would still be some level of overhead. And talking with our peers around the Washington metro area, some cities have contracted out, but many, many cities maintain the service themselves. And I haven't looked at it enough to know what was the deciding factor for them, you know, what made the choice, whether it was just historically that way or what actually generated the need for the in-house staff. Some of it is the level of services that they provide to their residents in general versus county or other jurisdictions providing. And if they're providing the bulk of the service, they tend to have the staff on hand to do that. The other question you asked was about what are the other uses of our public workspace. We have a very tight public workspace, so we don't have a whole lot of it available. One of the things I will point out is that two of the buildings, two of the five buildings that we have are not going to be touched at all in the renovation process. So, we still have buildings in need of renovation at Public Works if and when we proceed and go through with the renovation process. There's still two buildings that aren't addressed in that construction.
My question really was, are there other uses for that space at Public Works which you wish you could put in enough that you could see shedding sanitation use?
Within our own organization, not that I can, not that I can think of, we would certainly make use of any space we have. I don't envision expanding our multi-pile or anything else. Because of the nature of the work we do and the equipment we have, we wouldn't want any... Because of the nature of the work we do and the equipment we have, we wouldn't want anything in there other than us in terms of safety and liability and equipment.
So you're comfortable hanging on to sanitation from that perspective as far as the use of space goes?
Yes, yes, yes.
That was what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, one of the things, you might recall, when I was first hired, I was brought in as the recycling coordinator, which kind of became the de facto efficiency analysis of the sanitation division. So I will say of all the divisions in the Public Works Department, that division has probably been the most closely scrutinized and routinely scrutinized. And it's a fairly well-designed, well, very efficient operation because, again, we know exactly who we're providing service and what we're providing service for and we track tonages and we know mileage and we know fuel and we know everything that we can know about that particular service. It's one that we've spent a lot of time working on and we also are very specific about the specifications for our equipment. We know what kind of size it needs to be, what kind of power the engines need to have, what kind of capacity the vehicles need to have. So it's one that we've continued to oversee in a way that maximizes our efficiency. So there are other parts of our organization that I wouldn't be so comfortable saying this is a very efficiently-run division, but with sanitation, I'm quite confident that is a very efficient part of the organization.
Well, based on that, if you're looking for expressions of support.
Can I just add something if I may? I've worked in a number of cities and I would just say my experience has probably been a little bit different than Darrell's. I've seen probably sanitation service provided in probably three different ways in the cities I've worked in. One is, which I would not recommend, is that you basically just let that be a responsibility of individual homeowners and you don't control how that's franchised out and all that happens is you have multiple trash trucks running all over your country just tearing the heck out of them. So that's one option I would not recommend.
I lived under that one. I know not to recommend that one.
I would say, this is the smallest city I've worked in both by area size as well as population. Probably the city that I worked in that was probably closest in size was probably probably about four times larger than the city area-wise and larger population-wise that had its own sanitation department. And I worked in a very large city that did it itself. The others actually contracted for it, the city did actually pay the bill, but chose not to do it itself. So essentially, we franchised with somebody, we controlled the number of trucks that were running down the city streets, but we essentially collected tax money and then we paid the vendor directly. I think, Councilmember Robinson, the reason you don't see a lot of cities, regardless of their size, doing sanitation is probably a couple-fold is certainly the equipment is extremely expensive. Every time we get a truck, it's in the six digits. Many cities have gotten out of it because of landfills, filling up, tipping fees, and in many areas of the country have become very, very expensive. And I think just the cost of personnel, workers' compensation costs, just salary costs, things of that nature. So I think I've seen it work in a number of different ways, some better than others. But that, I would say, cities of this size, and I'm not arguing one way or the other, probably have tended to stay often away from providing sanitation service directly just because of some of the costs associated with the overhead. So I'm not arguing for it one way or the other, but I do think my own experience has been somewhat different.
You were going to?
Well, I was going to weigh in and based on everything I've heard, at this point, I tend toward keeping sanitation for the, kind of keeping the wealth in our own community and the control.
And I was going to, a lot of times I kind of fan out this way for comments and I was going to go down to the end and work my way in. So Councilmember Schultz.
You know, I've given this an awful lot of thought, partly because when I was campaigning in November, I got questions from constituents who sort of said, well, you know, what can we do to reduce our taxes? And since the renovation of the Public Works facility was current on people's minds, there was oftentimes this question coming up and saying, let's postpone all that sort of stuff. And of course, you know, I want to see what we can do to save money. I mean, that's one of the basic premises that we're holding this office is to try to, you know, be efficient and reduce costs and keep our taxes as low as possible. That probably should go without saying, but I'm saying it anyway. I wanted to ask you, before I go too far, ask you a couple of questions. And that is, is that what is the typical life expectancy of a new packer truck in our city?
Thirteen years is our cycle.
About thirteen years?
Yeah, it depends on the type of truck you buy. We've had policy choice over the years. There are some jurisdictions that buy trucks with a seven-year lifespan and I think when you see the kind of contract, their contract is for five to seven years generally and that's usually built on a seven-year timeframe for the life of a truck. It's a cheaper truck to purchase initially, but it only lasts for seven years. Our policy has been to have a thirteen-year truck, which is a beefier truck, a more expensive truck that lasts a longer time.
The budget currently, capital budget currently calls for buying two trucks next year. Is it at all possible that one of those purchases could be delayed one year just simply to spread out the hit on the, even though I know the money for this purchase has been reserved and it's there to be spent? I mean, like we did with the police cars, there was a review done and so a couple cars was decided that a couple cars purchases could be delayed. Is that within the realm of conception?
Certainly within the realm of possibility. We've had pretty good luck with these two trucks that we purchased almost twelve or so years ago when we're planning to replace next year, so we haven't had an extreme amount of repair costs or high costs. Usually by this time, they're starting to get fairly expensive and they have some significant downtime.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand what that is because a lot of us drive old cars and knows what that's like. I mean, when I started out looking at this, I guess my thinking, a little bit paralleled Mayor Williams's thinking, is that I was thinking, gosh, we can save a lot of money on the actual construction of this facility. We can save money by not buying two sanitation trucks. And that adds up to a lot of money pretty darn quick. But the more I got into it and thinking about all the ramifications of it, the more I find myself coming down, quite honestly, on the side of keeping our sanitation division pretty much as it is and keeping this a city function. And I was just, you know, there's several reasons for why I think this. And first of all, if I could be convinced that by deferring the, pushing this cost up to the county was going to reduce our property holders' property tax burden commensurate dollar for dollar, sort of say, well, we're going to save this amount of money and your property taxes are going to go down that much money, so you'll save that and you'll have that money available to go pay the fee to the Montgomery County contract. That would be one thing. But I can't sit here and honestly say to a constituent, oh, well, that's the way it's going to be. So what might very well happen is, is that we put off this thing and then we end up charging, having the same level of property tax burden and so people have ended up paying more for what they're getting now for a lower price. And so, I mean, no one can promise that to me. I don't expect you to be able to do that and therefore I can't promise that to a constituent. I'm concerned about the impact on homeowner's income taxes and that's a very real tax deduction. Homeowners on their Form 1040s have few deductions that they can use to reduce their taxes and the property tax is a very important one. I'm concerned about the loss of flexibility for staffing in emergency situations. We've already had two snowstorms this winter after several years of hardly any snow at all. But I'm also thinking beyond that to just general emergencies. We've been fortunate in this city, but gosh, there's just so many crazy things that happen. And I just think that a beefier city task staffing just gives the city manager, the department heads, more flexibility to deal with any kind of a crazy situation that comes I think also, as a homeowner in this city for 23 years, is one of the things that I've always been boastful about in saying, by gosh, when it snows at Tacoma Park, I know that these streets are going to be plowed probably before they get plowed almost anywhere else in North America. And the leaf pickup is something that's very reliable and lord knows, I've got enough leaves, I keep, fill up these trucks by myself. So those are kind of things that I value and I also note that sanitation workers are the staff people, of all the people that work for the city government, that come into the most frequent contact with our residents on a weekly basis for picking up trash and on a regular basis during the winter and the autumn for snow and leaf and also for those odd pickups when you've got stuff sitting that you've got to get rid of. And it's really reliable. I mean, they do a really good job. And I think that's one of the things when constituents talk about, well, what do I get for all the taxes I pay? That's one of the things that I've always sort of felt like I could say, that this is what you get for the taxes that you pay. And finally, you know, I just simply don't like the idea philosophically of giving up more of our basic services to a higher level of government and to a more remote level of government. Already, the city does not have any control over its land use plan. It doesn't have control over its zoning ordinance. It's not the city's ordinance in the first place, it's the county's zoning ordinance. It doesn't have control over commercial signs. If we want to modify the commercial sign regulations in the city, we can't do that. It has to be done through county ordinance. And the inspection of rental units is something that gets done at the county level, for better or for worse. This is the facts of the case. And so I found in a very short time, talking to some constituents and sort of saying, well, this is not really a particular problem they're addressing to me, I say, well, it's not really something this city is responsible for. We'll have to address this to the city, to the county, to get it taken care of. And I just hate to think that sanitation would just be one more of those things we'd say to citizens who are unhappy, well, this is not really a city function. We'll see what we can do to get the county to cooperate better and to look into this. I'm not trying to be prejudicial against the county government and the quality of their services and the people that we work with, but I just think that this is a very basic function and needs to be kept close to home. And so those are all the reasons that I think that it needs to be here. That's why I'm thinking in support of keeping sanitation.
Councilmember Clark?
I am 100% in favor of continuing with the Public Works building as planned. I absolutely do not favor eliminating any portion of the current Public Works portfolio, including the sanitation combo services that we're currently providing. That's the simple part of it and I will be brief in saying that I think Dan and I had an advantage being on the TASD committee, understanding the numbers. People frequently say, well, why don't we get rid of this or get rid of that? And of all of the things that we looked at, this one made the least sense to look at. Eliminating, just because the numbers don't add up to eliminate it. And one of the factors in that is that it is one of the things that we control. It's not like something we have to get a rebate back from the county. And so for people who are looking for places to save money within the city budget, I say to you that this is not the place. You need to look to the most likely areas where we're going to find savings is, if we have to, is areas where we have this rebate battle with the county. It's where the biggest discrepancy is. And my last comment is that, remember, my first few months on the council was all about leaves and leaf collection. And let me tell you, I don't think any of my constituents would be happy if anyone except the current Public Works Department delivered the trash pickup and the other integrated associated services that are integrated because of the staffing, because of the vehicles, because of the buildings. They would not be happy with that. They are very happy with the Public Works Department for the most part. I mean, we have an occasional time when somebody's trash doesn't get picked up or they didn't like the timeliness of their leaf pickup. But overall, I think people are very happy with this department. I do not want to change anything about that.
Councilwoman Seaman.
Just chomp down on the carrot.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Well, I'll make it easy too. I agree with the summary that's already been given by my predecessor speakers, preceding speakers, on the advantages of keeping sanitation services. I would add another one, which is that particularly given that the costs are close to awash, that there are a lot of assumptions in these numbers, it's always difficult to do these kinds of cost estimates. So the fact that they are awash means that the decision should be made on the basis of other things. And for me, the idea of contracting out sanitation services makes my skin crawl. I think contracting out should be reserved for specialized functions that are non-recurring rather than something that happens all the time. And the reason is that in Tacoma Park, my experience with my residents, are that they're pretty demanding about their services and we hear a lot when the services aren't up to snuff. I have a whole bunch of emails just tonight about, about questions about service. And if it were contracted out, then you have the problem of all contracting out things, which is accountability. The Public Works Director outlined this a little bit. My experience is, it works the following. In the first three months of the contract, when there's something wrong, the excuse is it's the shakedown period. They're learning about our city, they're learning about how we do it, they're getting their materials up to ready. Give them a few months and then we'll start working on it. Three months go by, things are still not working, then the discussion is, well, we have a corrective action plan, we're working with the contractor on fixing these particular issues, give us some time, I'm sure we'll get it working. Then you're coming up on just a few more months remaining in the annual contract, because these are often annual contracts. And then the excuse is, look, you know, it's just turned out to be bad, we're going to get a new contractor, there's really no point in working with this contractor. So you then have spent an entire year dealing with miserable services. And then you have a new contractor and you start the thing running all over again. And then there's a second annoying aspect, which is that the person who initially started supervising the contract was someone who used to do sanitation services and knew all about it. But after doing this for a year, they don't want to be a contract specialist, they want to do whatever, you know, their substantive thing is, so they leave. And typically, what happens is you get a contracting person who knows nothing about the details of the particular service. And so then things just go get worse. So I am absolutely opposed to contracting out anything like this. And so for that reason, I would very strongly support keeping sanitation, as Colleen put it. Let's move forward with the renovation of Public Works with this in it. Thanks.
Should we assume you've had some experience with contracting out at the federal government?
I've had nothing but mediocre experience with it. Yes, that's correct.
Is Councilmember Seaman's carrot-free?
I'm carrot-free and it looks like I'm limited on being able to influence this discussion, but I'm going to be very short and just say that aside from the decision that this council has made at this point, I think when I look at this and regardless of how the numbers come out, Public Works sanitation service is historically ranked as one of the top organizations within the city government as far as positive public feedback and good performance. And I'm not sure why we would look to that area first to find cost savings. I would prefer to look at areas that...
I would prefer to look at areas that we're not doing as well, and look at maybe contracting those other areas out might be an alternative that would not only save us money, but would also improve the quality of service. And for that reason, one of the areas that I would like to look at this year is the recreation department, and how we can possibly find cost savings there that would improve the quality of service to the city residents. And then the other thing that I know Councilmember Clay talked about, the leaf pickup, and I know that's important to many residents within the city, but I think as we look for areas to find cost savings, I think that maybe not picking up leaves may be a difficult step for the community. I think this year, in our current economic times, we're going to have to find some difficult decisions. And this is one that could be actually a benefit to the environment, that people compost in place rather than take leaves to the, expend all of the energy to take the leaves somewhere to dump them in a facility, a big pile to compost. So that's, those are the types of things I think we should be looking at, rather than what has been a stellar performing department.
And I'm wondering if the city manager wants to just make a comment or two relative to that point in particular, why this was looked at now? My sense is that it was because of the facility planning and also the cost of the service.
We were specifically asked to look at what was planned as part of the public works renovation, and what alternatives there were to providing public work services that might reduce the cost of the planned renovation.
And I certainly didn't mean to bash the individual or individuals who requested that, since it came from the council.
And if I can just, Councilmember Wright couldn't be here tonight, and he had some particular questions about this. And there were two that I thought just might need just a quick little response. And there was one about the county is going to spec compress natural gas for the vehicles, and whether that's something that we would consider for the upcoming purchase of our vehicles. And then he also had a question about the base systems benefit charge. And my understanding is that that's for the use of the transfer station, which the city takes the trash to, and therefore, that gets charged to individual property owners in the city. Everybody in the county pays that charge for providing the transfer station, the incinerator, everything that goes with processing of trash.
That's my understanding.
Regarding the question of fuel, alternative fuel for the vehicles, I was a little surprised to read that in the county's information as well. And I've done just a little bit of looking into it. I don't at all have a good sense of relative benefits of that. It kind of came off the radar for me. One of the challenges with a compressed natural gas system is you need a compressed natural gas fueling station. I don't know if any of you are around here long enough. We used to have a compressed natural gas fueling station that was provided to the city by Washington Gas 15 or more years ago, when we did our first foray into compressed natural gas, which was pretty much a disaster. But we were at the early end of compressed natural gas fueling, and a lot of the equipment that we purchased was retrofits rather than original equipment manufacturers. When we would take it for emissions tests, they would routinely fail. It wasn't providing a cleaner emissions. It wasn't providing more cost savings, and it wasn't providing more efficiency. We weren't running trash trucks at that point on compressed natural gas. We had a couple of cars and some pickup trucks. So we kind of got out of the compressed natural gas thing over a dozen years ago. We'll continue to do some research. I know that the equipment that we tend to use has changed over the years, but there's an enormous amount of new federal standards related to diesel engines, and then new requirements for emissions controls and particulate controls in diesel engines. Our current truck is light years ahead of our previous trucks, and the next year's version is going to be even more so to meet the federal standards. We also run those vehicles on biodiesel, a 20% mix, so we have a reduction in diesel itself. So I don't have the full, complete answer to that, but we'll take a look at it. As to the tax break that the county will be encouraging the private companies to apply for, we would not be entitled to that, because we don't pay taxes, so we wouldn't be entitled to that energy tax reduction as a result of the purchase of a vehicle. But we'll certainly take a look, and by the time we bring our vehicle recommendations to you, if and do we do go ahead, we'll have flushed out all the details about that and be able to provide a little more information.
Yes.
This is kind of on a related topic. One of the things I have been working on with Daryl in response to my understanding of the council's expressed interest was impossibly turning over road maintenance responsibilities, which would include snow removal to the county, and basically the city getting out of that business. Based on the comments that I just heard from six of you, is that an analysis we should continue working on? Because I really, Daryl's got enough things to do. If there's not interest in doing that, then I guess I'd rather stop her before she gets any further in that process. We've started that work. We're happy to finish it up and bring it back before the council, but...
I would say if that's an area that you prioritize for cost savings, that maybe we would look at that. But other than that, I would say, no, I'm not...
My comment, Councilmember Siemens, this is one of those issues where I think, you want to look at it from a financial perspective. The city would save money. The level of service that we would be providing would undoubtedly decrease. But the question was posed by members of this council, and I don't want to not be responsive to that question. At the same time, if there's no interest, I really hate to just spin our wheels doing an analysis for nobody.
Are you suggesting that maybe we can attain the same high level of service that we get on the state roads?
I think it might be slightly better, but I don't think it'd be what you get now.
Councilmember Clay.
But I'm happy to talk about the issue.
No, I'm not interested in continuing that. I have to tell you that this weekend, I was talking to folks who had gone out after the snow, and the place they could get around was in Tacoma Park. Although, they did note that, they didn't think that the people got out as fast as they had, and had gotten quite the depth that they had before. But even with that, they were still much happier with what was happening in Tacoma Park than what was happening in the other areas that they drove. I heard that driving on the Beltway was a real challenge.
I look forward to hearing your recommendations for budget savings. And so I would consider that, if that's one of the ones you put on table. But as far as my request, I would not request that.
And if I can just follow up on Councilmember Clay's observations, I was out driving everywhere on Saturday during the snow, including the Beltway. And it was all easy. And if anybody here wants any more information, I think there's consensus here not to go forward and answer your question.
Did you just say it was easy to drive on the Beltway?
Yes. It was slow because of other people, traffic, but it was easy to drive. 12 miles an hour. But that's normal, right? If any of my colleagues want to hear a treatise on the relative value of having the city control our roads and the maintenance versus the county do the same, I would refer you to our former colleague, now county council member Mark Elrich, who thought that we didn't do a particularly good job until he got to the county and saw what the county does, and basically said, we do a wonderful job. And if we turned it over to the county, that the maintenance schedule, which we've been trying to get, what, to less than 20-year cycle, the county is on a 40-year cycle. So if we turned over our roads to the county, they would say, oh, yours are in great shape. You've got most of them to 20 years. We can ignore you for 20 years.
That decides it.
Okay, so there's a consensus that I should tell Daryl she can see synthesis on the project that I have her working on?
Yeah, I'm a part of that consensus, although I, if we're pressed to reduce costs, like Terry, I'll look in part to you, because you're closer to the actual delivery of services to say to us, you know, these are places we should seriously examine. So it's a two-way street.
Okay, we'll take a break.
Right on time, maybe.
I think Suzie has the drawings that you wanted.
Okay. Yeah.
Priority projects and initiatives that were listed in the strategic plan. At times, there's hints about how we might, what we might recommend to staff for the coming year about a particular subject. But my understanding of tonight is to see if you have some ideas about what kinds of priority projects and initiatives you would like to see for the upcoming year? Because we're going to need to, we're working on preparing the budget, and it'd be nice to know if there's some things that have higher priorities that we can then put more emphasis on as we present a budget. I don't know if there's much more for me to say. I think it's up to you guys.
I guess first, I'll look for any general comments, and then I was going to go, I couldn't decide whether I wanted to go by section or by page, and it might just be easier to go by page and see if anybody has any comments on a page. But if anybody wants to make any general comments first, that would be appropriate. Okay, page seven.
Well, I'll make a joke.
Okay.
My general comment is, I remember the discussion of putting in various five-year plans. And the idea was to get the city to think, city staff to think creatively about what they wanted to see, and to space them out. And then we would do them, space them out over a five-year period, and that we would do them as resources, staff, time, et cetera, permitted. And so I was hoping that that's what each of the sections that ask for a five-year plan would have. I know that's what I was thinking of. So that's one general comment.
And if I could piggyback on that one on page seven, the first place that that really crops up is second bullet from the bottom, which is develop and implement a five-year projected expenditures budget.
Yes.
And maybe the city manager could just expand on the general comment on that bullet?
No, actually, the first item is the first item is a five-year, it starts on the bottom of page six.
Yeah.
About the performance-based budgeting, the five-year plan for that.
Yeah.
Of which the city manager...
Well, but I thought that one had a more fleshed-out answer than the one I was looking at, because that one talks about...
Oh, that's why I was directing you to that one. I didn't realize you were looking to the ones where we hadn't done anything. That's fine.
We did talk about the five-year projected expenditure budget.
Yes.
I think part of that will certainly be telling after we develop the budget for FY11, and in light of what we're contemplating in terms of, you know, the downturn in revenues, what services may look like after that. And certainly, I think discussions such as the one you just had this evening about whether or not to keep sanitation services in-house, that's almost an $800,000 item, are certainly helpful in providing some guidance.
So we're in a disruptive period, and once we get some direction there, then it'll be much easier to do?
It certainly will be.
Councilmember Stewart.
Well, I would offer a suggestion, which is that I get called to do these kinds of budget projections myself, and I have a, the way I do it, method, is to divide the activity up into two big pieces. The first piece is things that I know about. And these are things often that are relatively easy to predict, where they're going into the future. So if you know that you're going to replace your trash trucks every 13 years, that's in there. And then you have a second class of items that are things that you don't know, like the recession or union negotiations. And those are specific lines. And you put in low, medium, and high guesses as to what they are. You have essentially a spreadsheet with a couple of lines, you know, those things that you can predict. The point of the exercise is really to distinguish between those things that essentially the past is the best predictor of, or because of the way you're planning it, you know how the future's going to lay out, and those things that you really can't predict. And so then your assumptions are very specific, because they're assumptions about the things you can't predict.
Yeah, when I was a budget analyst in Kansas City, we did five-year forecasts, and we followed a model fairly similar to that.
Yeah. And since I already have a point, I'll continue with that. Since you mentioned the one that starts on page six, goes to the top of page seven, I recall talking to the city manager about performance-based budgeting, and she told me that she knows how to do this. And I have had a chat with Bruce Baker, who could certainly be a resource, since he's in fact done this sort of stuff. I'm sure he'd be available, even though I have not asked him. He's no longer a constituent of mine, so it's harder to ask him, but to help out with doing this kind of thing. And I heard tonight from Daryl, she cheerfully volunteered the information that the sanitation and recycling services have been well-studied and have all kinds of facts and figures. Seems to me that would be a perfect place to start doing a performance-based budgeting. It'd be a nice item to use, since we have all that information ready to go. It'd be a nice model to try in other departments.
And the, Councilmember Ross.
I've been thinking about our strategic plan lately in the context of ward plans. I've mentioned that a couple of times here, kind of in passing. And as I look through the strategic plan, it's a good document that helps organize a lot of our, helped organize a lot of our thinking, but I continue to come back to that, like, what will my ward, how will what staff does benefit my ward? And from the commercial districts, I have two, the junction and the section of New Hampshire Avenue. There are certain affordable housing issues in my ward, which are specific to my ward. There are certain numbers of multifamily housing. I'm just trying to get real specificity as regards my ward. And I guess that's what strikes me with the responses. I can understand where your responses are coming from, and how you've done your work, or how the answers reflect the work that you're doing or have done to the points in here. And I'm just kind of trying to bring it all back home for myself. So I'm going to continue to look through this and note where things in here relate to my ward. And when they don't, I tend to not think about them so much. And when they don't, I tend to not think about them so much, but when they do, I tend to focus on them more than the general comments.
One of the things that, certainly you've started these board discussions, which, you know, may be something that could help, you know, flesh out some of these for a particular ward and, you know, does this make sense for a particular area? Just as we had talked about, further discussions of some of the findings in the resident survey by Ward, you know, putting that together can help make this feel a little more real to a particular location or a particular issue.
Yeah, and it's not, I'll just make one last thing. It's not really so much a political point of view I'm trying to promote. It's more a local point of view I'm trying to promote.
The other question I have on page seven is the last bullet item about the Tax Duplication Task Force. And I was wondering if the city manager could just give us a quick snapshot of where that is since it's been dragging on for years and you're a member of it and you can just give us a quick sense of why there's still nothing.
On the municipal side, obviously, the gentleman who was the chair of the municipal side left his employment with this particular city. We also had one of the other six municipal reps move on. At this juncture, what I am waiting on is a tweaked draft from the county staff. There were some decisions made by the county, at least offering their opinion on several issues late in the process. I had asked for those items to be incorporated into the last draft that I had reviewed. So at least we were making comments on the final version. I have been probably waiting on that now for several months from the staff person from the county executive's office. Once I received that, I have offered to work with my municipal colleagues to turn, turn around any last-minute comments we have in two weeks. But basically, I've been waiting for that draft for a few months now.
And isn't there now the potential for that to come right as you're into the thick of the budget and you may find it difficult, you and your colleagues might find it difficult to turn that around in a two-week timeframe?
I think that will be challenging. I-
And why didn't they get it before now?
Obviously, I'm sure they have had pressures on their side as well with dealing with budget cuts. So I think it's been just a challenging time. I, I'm wait, I mean, I had, we played phone tags waiting to find out where that's at. I had hoped to actually get it right after the council recess because that would have been a good time in December to, for all of us to have had some downtime before all of our respective budget processes started. But I believe the individual got caught up with some other task.
The county has had two rounds of cost cutting during this fiscal year, so I know that they've, you know, that has, keeps pulling them off of things, but it has been frustrating.
Yeah, but I, I will take your question, Mayor Williams, as an opportunity to send yet another email tomorrow saying that the council as a whole had inquired about the status of the latest draft and see if I can get an update, so.
Just because this whole process started when a number of us made a request of, at the time, candidate Leggett and Silverman to commit to putting together this task force. They both agreed that they would. When County Executive Leggett got into office, he put the process together relatively quickly.
Probably within the first six months of his taking office.
Right, and so that was three years ago.
The, how you say, we had the co-chair on the municipal side leave his employment also very early in the process. The co-chair from the county side left his job. So I think there was a period of time where I would say both sides contributed somewhat. I would say in the last few months, it's been entirely on the county side waiting to get that final version of the report.
I just, I just can't believe it's taken this long.
It feels like a lifetime, let me assure you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Seaman.
I'm glad you brought this particular point up, Mayor Williams. Maybe we've learned something in this, in this endeavor that's taken us some years. I was trying to think of what it's like and it kind of, the image that came to mind was asking the Fox for more democratic management of the hen house when the Fox is actually in charge of the hen house and wondering why the Fox isn't being more cooperative. We're asking the county to change its rules in how it allocates funds that doesn't need to, where, where we have no power then to have them reallocate funds. And really, in a sense, you know, in some, in some sense, it's a, it's a state issue. And so I wonder if it's worth our reviewing at some point, when, after we get a response from the county, reviewing what we learned or what kind of strategic notions we can take away from the experience we've had. Clearly, it wasn't a really responsive experience we had with the county.
If I can just jump in, I mean, I think that the last few months in particular have been frustrating, as Suzie mentioned. I think the, the county has gone through several more rounds of budget cuts than we have over the past year. I don't want to leave a misimpression because of some of the frustration I've had in the last few months that there weren't many county staff members working on the task force who were very, very responsive. So I just don't want to leave this image that it was a slam of many of the county staff members. Many of them put countless hours in, turned things around very, very quickly.
Didn't actually care about it a lot.
Yeah, and I think some of them are probably frustrated as well. I think it's gotten bogged down at a certain level in county government.
Well, that's fair to me, to characterize it as Fox and Hen House, but the power balance actually, you know, is, is meaningful.
Yes, it is.
Councilmember Seaman.
As we talk about this, I'm reminded that I'm hopeful that as we move forward, we try to balance the, how much it's gonna cost to do some things and what the potential for cost savings is gonna be. And although there may be some significant cost savings we could realize here, I think given the current economic situation, the odds are slim that we're gonna have any meaningful, excuse me, changes in the money that we receive from the county. And because of that, and the great amount of time it would take us to continue to work on this, I'm not sure that this is gonna be a cost-effective thing to put much energy into this time.
Based on, I appreciate the comment, Councilmember Seaman, based on the version of the report that I had edited some time ago and what I expect to come back from the county, I don't think that there will be a considerable amount of last-minute editing that will be required on my part or the part of the municipalities. I think most of our comments we have offered, where there's areas of disagreement, obviously both sides stated.
I question your opinion.
Yes, I think there's some tweaking, but I, I appreciate the comment and the further we get closer to our budget process, the more concerned I become.
I participated in those meetings where we interviewed the potential public officials. And I'll tell you what I remember from the meeting with, it was Leggett and Silverman. Didn't somebody else run for?
Those two.
Why did we talk to Hans Wimmer? What was he running for?
County Council.
Okay. Anyway, I remember the conversation between Leggett and Silverman. And what I remember from Leggett is that he said absolutely he'd put together a task force, but it didn't mean that we would get any more money.
He said, changing the rules, yes, but implementation of those rules, he could have promised.
Yes.
We haven't gotten either one.
Well, I didn't have any faith that we were gonna get either one when we talked to him. You could read it in his body language and his tone of voice. What I thought was interesting about the other guy, Steve Silverman, his whole conversation with us was about viewing the city-county relationship as a partnership and that it actually, he, he was talking about how he agreed that it actually saves the county money to have municipalities in the county government.
Hallelujah.
Well, accepted. Didn't get elected. But he is the economic development person now for the county. And so maybe what we should do is come back around and talk to him about that in terms of, of economic development because we certainly see that the city puts a lot of money and energy into economic development and all the gains go into the county, essentially. I mean, there might be some commercial property tax, but it, it might be worth strategizing with him around some of those issues and seeing if we could get some buy-in from economic development folks. Because it certainly behooves the county to have a broader view of economic development and using the municipalities as part of their economic engine, which they do not do right now. They don't view it that way. And we struggle through that. So that's one suggestion that I have there.
Good point.
The second one is the performance measures. Is this on page seven, performance measures? We haven't hired somebody to do this yet. Is this where it says that?
It's the very top.
Haven't hired somebody to do this yet. So I don't know, I guess, I guess I would start with trying to work out some performance measures with the folks that we, with our division directors right now. I know where I, where I work, which shall remain nameless, the, one of our new, something that came out of the new legislation is that the general accounting office is gonna work with us on our performance measures. And I have to tell you, you know, you might want to do your performance measures first or at least take the first crack at them before you hire the consultant to come in and, and do them. Especially if it's, you know, if it's one or two, you gotta be able to pick off one or two, even if it's just in two or three of the divisions, I would, I would try that. And the other thing is, I think at some extent, it's up to us to, to pick the departments that are gonna be reviewed and put it on the schedule and fund it. And I, as I recall, we were talking about doing the, the recreation department is one of the departments. We had, we had two of them in mind and I can't remember what the other one was, but I remember that the recreation department was one. And, you know, I think we should, we should schedule it. And, you know, if it were me, I think I'd do an outside review and an inside review. Maybe do an outside review of the recreation department and, and inside review of one of the, one of the other departments.
What does an outside review mean? Someone-
To hire somebody to come and do it.
Yeah, have them come and look.
That, that would be my recommendation, is that we, that we make that happen.
And for outside, that would take money, which would be, which would be in the budget discussion or direction to the city manager in terms of recommending that budget.
Yeah, and the reason, I, the, I think that there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of money to evaluate in the recreation department relative to other departments. But we also, we just essentially finished a pretty significant review of some of the costs of the, of the sanitation services. I know it wasn't the entire department, but it's a division within it, which was a, you know, which is this year, a significant expenditure of staff time up through the administration. So it's not that we haven't, haven't done that. And it seems to me like something similar is happening in communications, even though the schmuck and haven't returned on these calls. I can tell where they're going with it, so.
Okay. Any comments on page seven before we move along to the, to Councilmember Seaman?
Only that I support what Councilmember Clayton said about review.
I have a feeling that there isn't any of us who would say you disagree.
Right.
Are there, should, page eight is fairly short. Are there any questions on page eight? My comments on page eight is erratic, but it was, continue to continue. Both New Hampshire Avenue and the junction, we just had that session on the junction last week.
I would just ask that with regard to New York, New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan, and the concept plan is in place because that's just what it is. It's a concept plan. It's not an implementation plan. And these two aren't been done. I guess what I would want these strategic plans to show is what's next in terms of implementation of the concept plan. Where do we go from here? I know this isn't to say that it hasn't been done to get to the point we're at. Appreciate that fact.
Yeah, on, just on that, there's, clearly the process is kind of ongoing about the sector plan. That'll take a little bit of time before that comes up.
Yeah, and that's under the, under the influence, really, the control of the county right now.
That's right. Obviously, if, if, if they start jumping into it again, then we have to, to pay attention again. I think one of the things that, you know, we'll be really looking at in the upcoming budget is the emphasis, the relative emphasis that you want to put on New Hampshire Avenue. It's a big project and a big initiative for the-
It is.
And on that point, there was, at one point, there was a work session of the planning board scheduled for December and I never heard any more. Did that get, did that happen? Did it move? Do we know?
I don't know. I don't know. I'll check.
If we can find out. All I remember was it was scheduled for when I was gonna be in California and they went, oops, and that's the last I heard. Any further questions on eight? Anything on nine? And I would move to 10. Unless anybody has any questions before we get to page 10. Questions coming from someone on 10.
Actually, if I can just, it's, you guys can't do it tonight. I mean, it's very late, but one of the, the charge that we're supposed to be doing every year is to also look through the assumptions of whatever that are in this document to see if there's some tweaking that needs to be done. I'm not asking you to do it tonight. I don't think we have that kind of time. But it is something that, it would be appreciated if you, if you look at, if you have some thoughts, if you share that.
I'd say several financial assumptions may have changed.
I think there may be some changes in those.
Okay, page 10. A lot of answers on page 10 are, the task force on environmental action may address them or is working on a particular issue. Last chance for page 10. Going once, going twice. So. I'll just comment that there was, there's something here about the review, the requirements of the city ordinances, for example, trees and vegetation. And we have the harvest report upcoming in a couple of weeks. Page 11.
On the bike transportation improvement plan, I know the plan already exists, and we're talking about prioritizing improvements and providing funding. I think what we need here is a good volunteer, like Catherine Tunis on our environmental stuff or Wayne Sherwood in our, in our housing stuff. Somebody who's just, you know, eats, breathes, sleeps this stuff. You know, Wayne has forwarded us all kinds of information about things that we could be applying for under the stimulus and, and other federal funding around housing, all kinds of stuff. And then, and then Catherine worked with some folks to submit a grant around weatherization and these are people in our community that are going out and looking for money for these things that they really care about. And I think we should put it out there that we would like a volunteer or, or two or three from the community who might be interested in helping us identify bicycle, bicycle funds, essentially. And, and I think the thing that I learned from the grant writing process with Catherine Tunis is that we then also have to have a staff member who's gonna help pull it together because as much as we could do with numbers about estimates and things like kind of tying that back into the city was a, was a weakness in the, in the grant process. And I think, you know, volunteers can do a lot of it, but there has to be, there has to be a lead person also on the, on the city side. So I, I think that's what we should do is look, I think maybe we need a whole committee of people, but, you know, we need some people in this city to champion-
We have the safe roadways folks and the folks that worked on the bike stuff, they're a little burned out. And I think that, you know, so we've really been using our volunteers heavily for the several years on this, so maybe there's some, some, some new help on that.
As I said, I don't think the safe road-
As I said, I don't think the Safe Roadways Committee has appeared before the council, and I can't remember if they appeared before the council.
It's been a while.
That may be something you may just want to consider, having them come before the council and see if this is something that they would be interested in taking on, or if you need to find some other alternative.
I think there are some hardcore bicyclists in the city who aren't on the Safe Roadways Committee, I'm sitting, it might be sitting next to one.
Making work.
Sheryl, who is on the task force on the environment right now, is absolutely hardcore bike guy all the time.
We have Bob Sherrill here, planning about-
Right.
So, maybe we need a subcommittee of the Safe Roadways Committee to address the political issues and-
We need two or three people who are interested in identifying funding and helping us write grants for it.
Right.
Because the rest of, you know, we have a plan. So.
And a few years ago, the Safe Roadways folks, you know, they did have energy, and we're looking into bike stuff. Get them re-energized, or get somebody re-energized, it's a good idea.
And the other thing is that I'm not sure that the task force on the environment is actually going to address some of these educational and incentive programs, particularly the benchmarks piece, unless we specifically ask them to. And I think to some extent, if we're going to have these connections to these educational programs in the schools, it's, I, I know it's listed under Recreation Department, it's listed under the Police Department, this is, this is where in the Environment one now. So we've got this idea that we're going to have these great broad connections to the schools and do this work with kids, and I, I think that we need to do more than just put it into the strategic plan, we should really sit down and talk about how we're going to develop a structure and a mechanism to make that happen, because it's, I don't think we can just dump it on to the existing staff structure. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work, it's a, it's a new way of, of doing business, essentially, and, and if we, if we did it in a meaningful way that I think we intended it to be represented in the strategic plan, it would displace other work, or will require additional staff.
Councilmember Snapper, I could be real concise, I agree entirely with what council member Clay has just said, on both, both forms of the panel. Any other comments on page eleven? Page thirteen, skipping over the assumptions on page twelve, councilmember Ross.
Well, I just have a quick question about the assumption on page twelve. The second to the last one says, the 10 percent cap on increases on assessments is phased out. What is that? What is that phased out of the 10%?
Yeah, that's a, that's a word, it's actually-
Well, that's, yes, it, yeah, that is a strange, it is a strange wording, but obviously, I think, you know, we've just gotten the assessments in, we're going to see within two weeks, the real impact of that.
So it's not that the, the cap is going to evaporate?
The cap is not evaporating, it's just that the property values have decreased, so that people like me are catching up to where, I've always been behind.
I thought maybe I was missing some-
I'm sure that that's what that meant.
Okay. And then, I'm, I'm reaching towards page thirteen, but I'm going to take the bottom assumption on page twelve, and the first strategy on page thirteen, and note something, the bottom assumption on page twelve says that we'll continue to regulate, we in the council will continue to regulate the frequency and amount of rent that can be charged to tenants, and then the top, the strategy on the top of thirteen is to support, strengthen, and promote local businesses and business, business associations. And I know there's a tension point between property owners, landlords, who are business people, local business people, and our role in setting rents that can be charged to tenants. And I'm not proposing opening up rent stabilization, but I just want to note that that is, that's a kind of a conflict, or not, not necessarily a conflict, but it's a tension point in our local business structure. And I wonder how we'll get back around to that. I'd like to, I would like to see us focus on a couple of specific points, that where there are tensions, and that's, that's an example of one, where we want to strengthen local business, but we're restricting local business at the same time. And so I'm going to kind of keep my eye out for those kinds of tension points, and maybe we can devise a structure, or a strategy to look at those in a narrow way, instead of opening up a big discussion on, let's say, on state legislation.
Yeah, because there was a fairly intense tension point right over here.
I know, I can, I can only imagine, I can only-
Until you have four votes, don't bother to bring it up again. Well, I'll count three, right?
Lucky, page thirteen. A lot going on on those. I have a comment on page seventeen, the, one of the bullets in the middle of the page says that one of the strategies is to capitalize on the community's tremendous interest in the arts and culture. And I have to say that the, one of the things that I've noticed is the intensity of the efforts addressing the community's interest in the arts and culture, the rotating exhibits coming through in the atrium, the various events that have, are being promoted or about to happen have just happened. The, the call for public art, we saw that was passed around up here tonight, that has a deadline at the end of the month, that was mentioned earlier. Just any number of efforts in terms of the arts and culture, that I think there's been just an awful lot of work put in by the Arts and Humanities Commission, and Sarah Daines and whoever else on the staff have been working with them, that I think has really stepped up that effort, and it really shows, and I think, I think we all appreciate it. Councilmember Snapper, you have a comment?
I, I do, and it's always hard to identify things that are missing, but this seems to be a, as good a place as any to have highly the work that's going to happen with regard to the auditorium, because there is quite a lot of planning for activities to use the auditorium, and the council will have a number of decisions to make about the use of the auditorium, but boy, the next year or so, when it gets finished, it's going to be a very exciting period.
So maybe we need to add a strategy in there, having to do with getting a handle on the best, the best strategy for the, a good use of the auditorium and incorporation of community activities into that new and expanded asset.
You know, in fact, that's another one, I think that's a similar tension point, at least it was in my mind, because it's, it's an instance where we are going to be called on to balance staff policies on how the auditorium is used, when it's staff, how much additional staff will be, which, what the charges will be on additional staff, the timing of things, our own, our internal policies on who can use the auditorium for what purpose, and balancing people who want to perhaps schedule profit-making events there with our, with the other priorities we've put forth in the past. And, so that's one of these tension points, and we're going to have, whatever we can do on that tension point to find a way to resolve the things that come up effectively, I'm looking forward to how we do that, if maybe we can get value out of that.
And that's going to be coming up in-
In March.
March.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not too long.
And at this point, maybe I'll ask if we have a sense of how we're going to, with the potential for adding that point about the auditorium, how we're going to make changes here, or is this the result of this discussion?
Well, you know, we, we, we don't know. We would, we, you know, basically what's in here, and the auditorium's a good example, I mean, that's kind of coming up, and we don't have a particular recommendation yet, because we're working with this group to come up with a series of recommendations and points for you to, you know, come up with, with policy changes, or whatever you want. But, you know, what, what it is, I think just identifying the points tonight, obviously, there's a whole lot that, as we present the budget, we're going to have to go back and, and let's say there's a real decision, without grant funding for some New Hampshire Avenue item, are we going to go forward with it? I mean, all these, I, just, just picking something out of the blue, but, you know, we may have a variety of those kinds of things to bring to you and say, this, this particular provision tends to go with this point in the strategic plan, and, you know, now that we have this new information, how do you want to balance it, or whatever. So I think, I, I don't really know how we're getting out of this, other than to make the notes and the comments that you do tonight, and then we'll have to just keep bringing it back as we get more information through the budgeting process. I don't see us doing it too much before the budgeting process, because I think there's, you've put tension, and there's some give and take about what kind of funds we have available.
But at some point, we're going to need to kind of say, okay, we've, we've done the review, it's going to be, in a sense, ongoing, but we have to have a point where we say, we're, we're making some changes, or we're just leaving it alone and say, we've reviewed it, and we'll do it again next year, but then we're working off on the two-year rule.
Well, I think that clearly, if you guys come to some consensus that some parts of this are more important than others, that's really important information for us.
Therefore, the, the sense that we need to get out of this in that way is pre-budget.
If you have any guidance in terms of which of these things perhaps rank more highly on your list, that would be helpful for me to know.
Okay, so we'll-
You may have to do that after you go through the pages, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm just trying to think about process of how we deal with revisions to the strategic plan, and whether it needs to be a multi, it's, it's an annual review, but it's a multi-part process that takes part, takes place now, in January, February, and then there's another piece that goes along with it that maybe happens in June.
You know, there may be some points here where you kind of see that something was completed. That's nice, you can acknowledge, gee, that sounds good enough. You know, I mean, I think that's-
Councilmember Snapper.
I'd like to reverse course here, sorry. Go back to page fourteen, where a key indicator indicates an increase in the percentage of residents rating the availability of shopping opportunities as good or excellent as reported in the Tacoma Park resident survey and other evaluation polls. I left out the part about affordable housing, because my point is about shopping opportunity. Our resident survey indicated that to the contrary, that was one area that went down in terms of quality. I don't know how all this fits in to the strategic planning process, but I think it's worthy of pointing out, that I think this is an important area in my word, and in my opinion, and it deserves some attention, perhaps a teeny bit more than it's gotten. And this isn't necessarily to suggest that the city has to go out shaking the trees to get more business, certain kinds of businesses located in certain locations, as some, some residents have wished for. But it might also mean doing, or trying to figure out how to do a better job of getting citizens to better appreciate the shopping opportunities that already exist, from a perception point of view. I'm not trying to play games with anybody, but I do think that in the New Hampshire Crossroads area, there's a lot of businesses that are essentially just not known, through no fault of their own. So I, the solution is not the, I'm not proposing a solution, I'm just saying this is an indicator that isn't going in the right direction.
Very, that's very important. I mean, one of the things, obviously, what happens in a year is hard to really know. I mean, that's, you know, and I think even though that this was adopted in May, we still didn't really have a concept of some of the recession's implications for our community on that. But actually, it's really important to look at these key indicators and see, you know, our goal is to try to increase the shopping opportunities or the use of the existing businesses that we have, and appreciate that.
I'm ready to go forward now.
Oh, okay. Then go ahead.
Thank you, that's completed my comment.
I think we're back to kind of finish up on seventeen.
Just a note, on page seventeen, I put some information in that the Recreation Department had forwarded to me under the strategies, because they didn't seem to have a place under priority projects and initiatives of that information. So, that's, that's why it's there, I think that's the only place in the document where I put some information in out of order.
Any sense on the second bullet from the bottom about the possible collaboration interdepartmental five-year plan, Recreation and Police on programming designed to improve health and safety? Any, because the note is no meeting or progress, is that because it was just not gotten to, or it was perceived as hard to do, or somebody couldn't get their hands around it, or I'm trying to figure out the, kind of where that is?
I, I think this would probably similarly to the comment that council member Clay made in terms of what's involved with these type of efforts, I think with the Police Department, I can probably address that, probably more than I can rec. We've had, as the council is aware, a number of officers who have been out due to injuries, and quite frankly, the Police Department's focus has been on combating crime. And I think it's, not that I think anyone doesn't view this as a priority, but it's a matter of how much time and staffing resources there are, and unfortunately, I think which is very common in a small organization, it gets a little bogged down in the day-to-day operations of each department, not leaving a lot of time left in the day for other things.
So, do any of my colleagues feel like we should make any judgment about kind of the, the priority of that initiative? Should we kind of say, you know, well, our sense is that that's a little bit lower priority, or just leave it alone?
I'd make it lower priority, just because of the difficulty of collaborative endeavor like that.
Yeah, it's not that I think it's any less valuable, it's, I think, we don't have any money to put into it right now, and we probably have to focus on the things that more closely correlate to the other things that we're doing, so we can get more achievement out of the energy that we're spending right now.
And is there a correlating-
So I guess in that sense, it makes it less of a priority at this time, even though I think it's important.
Right. And, and does that extend to the following bullet, about in partnership with PTAs and local volunteer groups, implement crime prevention programs for youth, or is that different? And should it be with that?
No, I think it's the same. I, I didn't make any additional comments on all the other component pieces, because I think, like, my first, that's why I've been quiet since then, the rest of them, I think, all relate to that first statement that I made. Until we're going to put some structure to that, which, you know, we have to do, or we have to make priorities over other things, then I don't think it's going to happen.
Yeah, and I apparently neglected to, to put in the information on that last bullet, but the, you know, it-
There is, there is a little red on the next page.
Hmm, not in mine. I must have a defective copy.
Says this has not been done.
Ah, there it is, okay.
Specifically didn't do this.
That's right. But I do know that, you know, with the Chiefs Advisory Group, Renee Johnson, who's the principal of the middle schools on there, and there's, there certainly has been efforts kind of on individual basis with schools on this, but, but the whole big picture planning of that, I think, has been the part that's taken, is maybe just be a little harder to tackle.
Yeah, I think some of it, I know- Yeah, I think some of the work staff and Eric's there, I know, have had meetings with the middle schools.
Quite a lot.
Some of the bridges are there, but I think it's just not this five-year plan or anything of that nature that's in doubt.
Pages 18 and 19. The one thing that I noted, just worth mentioning, is the top of page 19, that first bullet about develop and implement an online system that provides easy reporting of streetlight outages, connect to Pepco's or Montgomery County's online reporting system, develop online mapping system that allows residents to easily identify the pool number of a specific streetlight. The, all of the effort right now in terms of the streetlights is to understand the place that municipalities have in commenting on the proposed rate increases for streetlights, and both the Montgomery County chapter and the Prince George's County chapter of MML have put forward money to formally participate in that process. And that may have some potential impact on possible future opportunities or places for collaboration with other municipalities in figuring out what anybody who's doing the streetlights gets engendered some conversation about who has what situation and what they're doing and what they have done, and any efforts at the state level. Delegate Al Carr is kind of the point person on a lot of this. He was the point person for the MML Montgomery chapter when he was a Kensington councillor. And he's been putting together a lot of effort on this at the state level of... Has there, my sense in terms of the reporting is that we're still at the point where we're, with the Public Works Department is reporting things kind of from the city and track those things, but we've also told people to individually report them to the, to Pepco.
We just basically, if someone calls us, then, you know, if we have the information, or we will go out and get it, you know, either Peggy in my office has done it, and the Public Works has done it. You know, we went through that period of time where there were a lot of outages, and that were not being addressed. I don't know if the situation's gotten better, or people are just choosing to go directly to Pepco, but we haven't got any calls in our office in some time.
People gave up?
Maybe that's...
Well, I've heard mixed reports.
People call Pepco.
People call Pepco.
I always give them the direct, the direct link so that they can report it themselves, because then they get the information better.
So it may be that little work has been done on this in terms of what's laid out here, but it may be that, at this point, the situation is being dealt with reasonably well. I wouldn't ever say well, just because I don't think anybody's particularly happy with any of the issues associated with the streetlights, but...
But see, I don't think this is, this is the online thing to...
Correct.
I just don't think this is that difficult. I think the data exists, the county has it up and running, they just happened to blackout the city of Tacoma Park, which I think is completely and totally ridiculous. This seems to me like a communication issue, and if the issue is they don't have the GPS, you know, point codes for it, then, you know, I can take a GPS and I could send my Girl Scouts out, and they could do it as a project to map the...
But if we still pay the same taxes, why didn't they code ours?
Well, I think they're, I think they're already coded. I think Pepco, I don't think the county went out and measured the GPS point for all of their streetlights, I think Pepco knows where they are.
Well, Montgomery County has their lights. I mean, it's a weird amalgamation, and it's not, it's not consistent.
But the program exists, like, they've already done the work to set up the program for how it works. It doesn't seem like that should be that difficult. And in all honesty, the process of getting the points for each of the lights is just not that difficult.
There's a lot of lights.
There are. I could personally do the ones in my ward. I mean, it's, I could, I could walk the street, I walked the ward before several times. It might take me, you know, an entire weekend of walking around the ward, but I could do it. Because the biggest problem that people have is that they notice that the lights are out when it's dark and cold.
And you don't wanna go out and look at the number.
Yeah, but you know whose house it's in front of, and, you know, you could go home and...
Ward four is kinda small, could you do my ward?
What do I get for it?
Hi, you can, we'll...
Let's grab a few.
We'll invite you to a Richie Citizens Association meeting.
Will there be chocolate cake?
You betcha.
They have food, they have, they have vending machines.
They have vending machines.
I guess, I, you know, what the council wants to do with this is important. I do wanna mention, and what I've put in here, is that, you know, at this point, our emphasis in terms of what's online, we've really been focusing on kind of rethinking our website and what we provide, and so that's where our time has been recently.
Somebody has to have a college project where they have to create some kind of a program, and you should, you should enlist them. Somebody's got a GPS class where they have to make something. They want something for their portfolio that they can point people to for years as their project. One of my projects from graduate school is still online, nobody paid me to do it. I did a mapping project in West Oakland.
Sounds like you're just the one to organize this project. And we'll all show you our gratitude.
Chocolate cake.
You can have my piece. Speaking of online, page 22.
Wait a minute. Oh, I have a comment on 22.
Well, go ahead.
So I'm really happy that we're able to take money for the Recreation Department online, and I'm looking forward to the day when we'll be able to do that with the others. But the program that we're using is not so great.
As compared with what?
As compared to the recreation program that we used in the city of Oakland in 2001, nine years ago. It's just the interface isn't that, the interface isn't that great for searching for classes. It's, I mean, it's okay, but I've seen better stuff when we go to the municipal league conferences, and have all the integrated fancy computer stuff that they always wanna show you. At the American Planning Association convention, sometimes they have, they have software for communities that integrates all of the different finance components, including the recreation program. And it just seems like it's just, it's a little easier to use, and just the interface is better and more interactive, shows you classes in a group, just, you know, the way you can search for things. This one seems kind of flat. Which, you know, like I said, I appreciate that we can now pay for classes online. It is, it's a definite improvement.
I understand, we all look forward to an improved online presence for the city.
We get to see what they're planning.
Anything else on 22 or 23? I have one comment on 23, which is the second bullet about develop, conduct a minimum of two offsite council meetings per year, using alternate ways of communicating with residents, for example, roundtable discussions that include staff, council members, and members of the public. One of those is going to be coming up. It is now on the schedule, but it's far enough out that I haven't commented on it yet. March 29th, which is a fifth Monday, that's gonna be whatever format we use to talk with residents about alcohol, policy changes, whether we go to the state request. So that fifth Monday in March, it will be that topic. Haven't really figured out the details, location, format...
Night at a bar?
Et cetera, et cetera.
With Olive Lounge?
Any suggestions are welcome, that's the date.
If it's a takeout, it should be out on the curb. Brown bag.
Better be good weather. Okay, so, March 29th, good.
Page 24. I kind of underlined in that first bullet the organizing of activities by council committees, and the city council will attend as a show of support. I was like, hmm, what are these? Do we have any upcoming, do we have anything that we feel that we need to request?
The idea behind this, I think, was that...
Or is it coming from them?
I think that the idea behind this is that, as you met with committees when they do their reporting, that you would give to them a charge to, what kind of activities are you planning to use to do in this building, to encourage them to have activities and educational events here in the community center, and then to appreciate that they're doing that, you would actually attend as well. So I think that was, that was the idea behind that, that it was a, it was generated out of a concern that some kinds of activities were not occurring in the community center, and that this would be a good place for our committees to show off their work and to further their mission. Did I get that right, Barney?
So we need to be thinking about that in anticipation of any committees that we have reports from, and we have upcoming. I would say the emergency preparedness, folks are coming in two weeks.
Now, they actually have done some stuff, so I, I mean, I give some credit to emergency preparedness for trying to do that here.
I wonder if the discussion about the auditorium use, which has a direction that it's already involved in discussing those, some of the issues, along with, what is it? RUCR?
CUDC. Cultural Development Corporation, yeah.
Should we have some of them where we engage them?
I don't know, I mean, they certainly have, they certainly, they, the one committee meeting that they've held so far has been in this building. I think, I'm not sure that, that they have something that's educational to give out to the larger community at this point, I think it's more recommendations for you.
More issues for us to, you know, recommendations and things that we have to pay attention to. It's sort of a metacommittee for the building, right? How will we use the building?
Right, I, I'd have to think about, maybe could all think about some way to do that. But I think, you know, clearly, there's a variety of committees that exist that, whether it's, you know, putting on some environmental display or whatever, that it be things that take place in this building to, to show off the work of the committees to the larger community, and to, and to use this building in a variety of different ways than it is.
I forgot what I was gonna make a comment on. Oh, yeah. So anticipate more local content as a result of the renovation of the auditorium, the very thing we were talking about.
Right.
So staff is exploring the idea of a youth media project using the music video room and the computer center modeled after some activities coordinated by the Gandhi Brigade in Silver Spring, it may have a focus on Spanish-speaking youth. I think that's great, and I would hope that we would prioritize more of this. It seems like a great way to engage young people. My kid got elected historian last year at Piney Branch, and then their SGA didn't do anything. But one of the things that she was interested in doing was, you know, coming over here and talking to the TV people more and seeing about doing some partnership stuff between, you know, Piney Branch and their student government people, and we have, you know, we have the Tacoma Park Middle School, Piney Branch, and even the elementary school. And then at least, at least the Piney Branch and the middle school kids could probably engage in some, some projects around that. And would love to see the new auditorium used in that way. I would be interested in doing like a, kind of a council coffeehouse kind of a show too, with issues in Tacoma Park, where we could, we could trade off some of that work. And the other thing related to this, and related to what Dan was saying, was that, you know, there have been a lot of conversations, I think, with council members and different people and in the community about how we're gonna do the programming around the auditorium. You may recall, when we first started this, the Recreation Department said they did not have the capacity in their current staffing to do any of the programming around the auditorium, and I think that we have the, we have people from the Recreation Committee and people from the Arts and Humanities Committee who've been working about it and talking about it, and connecting with the cultural consultancy group. I think maybe we should look at formalizing that more, and that structure, and how we're gonna do that, and probably adding to the mix some people from the sort of music side. Because recre, my sense is the Arts and Humanities Commission is more, more visual, visual arts oriented.
The Auditorium Committee that has already, has met, had quite a few people that were music-related, as well as, you know, a variety of folks.
Beyond just the two committees, there were other people.
Right, it's kind of a mixture of folks.
Right. But I think they have a, they have a specific topic that doesn't really, I don't think that they really move into the long-term programming of the committee unless we formalize that relationship. And I think at that time, we should also look at who's there and create an opportunity, and look and see what kind of seats and representation we might not have. Like, maybe we wanna have more people who are connected to the, you know, the schools and the, and the education group, or to our own media library folks. And I think maybe now is the time to, to do that evaluation, since it's, it's coming up.
If I might, are you, I mean, the way that the, that we're working at this point is that this is pretty much an ad hoc group that makes recommendations to you, but you're talking about a continuing different committee?
Yeah. As I recall, the Recreation Department said they were not able to do this, and we would have to do it, so...
Well, I think, just to follow up, one of the things that we have asked Cultural Development Corporation is to come back with a couple different models about how this is staffed or handled. And they have a variety of things to choose from and to look at, from volunteer model to, you know, full-time staff-type models. So some of that, I think, would be really responsive to the kinds of interests that you have. And, you know, where that person or entity or group sits will be up to the council, you know, when you receive that information.
And they come in March?
Yeah.
And when does the auditorium open?
First of May.
It'll sit empty for a while. Maybe we should do some interim planning for things.
I think there's some interim planning, there's a lot of demand, certainly.
I'd be interested to see kind of what the diversity of the advisory group is, both from a, kind of an interest perspective, and also from a cultural, you know, ethnic perspective.
I'll get you as best of information as we know from how people have revealed themselves. But that's, that certainly is already, was one of the topics at the first meeting. You know, was, you know, how diverse are we, and are we...
And is it representative of the community, and...
Right.
Yeah. And I think it's maybe more diverse than some of our other committees.
That may be.
Are we done going through the pages?
Unless you have something?
I have any.
I have a comment, which I didn't notice until we found the indicators. The general comment is, each of the sections have key indicators. And I guess it wasn't clear who is going to comment on each of the key indicators. Just pick page twenty, just open to page twenty. And it's, you know, some of the things could come from resident surveys, some would come from, you know, like crime reports, or, you know, et cetera. There's a, there was one later on response time, you know, percent of requests for service that are acknowledged within 24 hours. Did we, I don't remember now, did we set up who was going to fill those out? And should we therefore going forward, either direct the council or the city staff, or somebody in order to do that?
Yeah, unfortunately, I think staff has most of the information, so, you know, there may be some aspects that aren't appropriate for us to answer, but probably the majority are.
I'm not necessarily suggesting that you, you know, spend next week working on this, but I think going forward-
I think we need to get it into a systematic thing.
As part of the annual review, we should have some, you know, results.
You won a lot, Ruben. They said you won a lot, Ruben.
I mean, that, that is the point.
That's why we have those indicators, and see how we're doing.
Yeah, I'll work on it next week. Work on it in the fall.
I have some other things to do, too, yes.
Well, it's not even clear that this is the, I mean, maybe we should wait till the next cycle. I'm not saying that somebody has to do this ASAP, it's just that I think we missed that in the, in the process of when and who is going to do the tabulations for the key indicators.
Right. And I think, you know, I mean, some of these are the kind of performance benchmarks, I mean, related to that, you know, that we'll be looking at in the budgeting.
Can we do it in August?
Does that sound good to you? Well-
Except I think, you know, you make the point, are you gonna use the information in budget decisions or not?
Well, we'd like to, so it has to be done before the budget process.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we got this adopted in May, so it's kind of a, we're kind of starting in a weird place.
This is sort of the first time we're going through it, so.
Yeah.
Well, maybe what's worthwhile is for staff to think about how the timing would work best. You know, when is a time of year that you have a little more time? It's gotta be before the budget, you know, et cetera. Maybe, maybe August is a time to think of it.
When the council is out of their hair.
Well, that's why I was thinking, that's why I said August.
Yeah. And December doesn't sound like a promising time.
December has-
Well, you know, it does, I mean, in some respects, we could look through the end of the fiscal year.
I'm not asking for a decision, not asking for a decision, I just that you're thinking about it.
Any other comments? I'll try.